How are you doing? I got another email from my girlfriend today.
So Amanda.
Not one mic.
Can we both go out of the cluster?
Yeah, that's what I liked.
Dylan, like a villain?
Not really.
Maybe I should check the bylaws.
Working, working, working. Actually, I did 50 Mile Race Month Saturday.
They're on now?
I'm running.
I don't think they're on yet.
I like running.
Yours is rap.
You're still a rock star?
Everyone will think you have a good career.
A runner, rock star. That's important.
Actually, this is one of my favorite people in the world. Sirius, Sirius ultra runner. And the only time like this is when we run these races together.
Oh, that's really sweet.
Everyone's here except Andy.
Run like one race. Great, because after a few miles.
Do you have a mini?
This Susan.
Okay.
This Susan.
Give me just a few minutes. That's really cool.
What kind of fun do you have?
So, we have Alex. We got a good time out there. There's an hour.
I do. Very cool. So, so I'd like to see one of your daughters that comes to baseball. So you have, how many kids do you have?
Two, I have a son and a daughter.
Are they both adopted?
Alex is a birth child, Hannah is adopted.
That's yours, because this is mine right here.
Thank you, Chris. I mean, not being real. But I'm interested.
I'm even myself interested.
All right. One is terrific. Terrible. Take a second and we'll get underway off of it. Make sure we give one more minute per directorcy vote.
Right across the intersection?
Yes.
Did he forget the meeting was this Sunday?
Um, somebody might want to.
Did you clean?
Not yet, but I talked to him.
Probably stuck in traffic from Aspen. It's a long drive from Chicago.
Especially in the winter.
All right, folks.
We should break you guys up.
That's working. We will begin. Thank you for waiting just a few minutes. I appreciate that. Thank you, everybody, for attending tonight. We have a packed agenda, and obviously, there are some very interesting components to that agenda tonight, so thank you. But before I begin, I just wanted to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Obviously, everybody's going to go their own way and start planning their trips and getting together with friends and family next week. And I think one of the biggest things that I like about living in Reston is seeing events like this. So if everybody can hear me, can you hear me? Nobody can hear me in the back? Can everybody hear me in the back? Okay.
What?
So again, thank you, everybody, for being here this evening. And to begin, I'm gonna call for a motion to approve this evening's agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of Directors, Thursday, November 21st, 2013. Do I hear a motion?
Tim moved and Mike seconded.
Any comments to the agenda for this evening? Then I'll ask, all those in favor of the agenda, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Is anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? All right. I move to approve the board minutes of October 24th, 2013, the 2013 Regular Board of Directors Meeting. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Vincent, second.
Any questions to that, those minutes? All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? I move to approve the board minutes of October 28th, 2013, the Special Board of Directors Meeting. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Let's give Andy a second.
All right. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by stating aye.
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 Is anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? I move to approve the board minutes of November 11th, 2013, the Special Board of Directors Meeting. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Amanda seconded.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Is anybody abstaining?
I abstained. I was not there.
Excellent, all right. Shook it up a little bit, all right. All right, so we got through the easy part. And again, I thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. We're gonna do the agenda a little bit, just given the nature of two items tonight, one being the Lake Anne redevelopment and the other one being our operating budget. What I'm hoping to do is work the flow, just as we did back last month, where I'm gonna give an opportunity to give a little bit of a background for both ourselves, as well as the stakeholders, give the board an opportunity to ask questions after those presentations, and then at that point in time, we will have member board comments on that particular topic. So at this point in time, does anybody have anything they want to say before I begin?
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Yes. Well, I think probably everybody is aware that I am an owner at the condominium. I represent the Lake Anne Tall Oaks District. I own a lovely two-bedroom, two-bath townhouse in the condo, and in the past, I think it's been 10 or more years ago that I served on the Board of Directors there. I have served as the Chair of the Merchants Committee. I have an office, I rent an office space down there, and have, for many years, run the craft market at Lake Anne on Saturday mornings, the proceeds of which go to, you know, supporting the fun activities that happen on the plaza. So, concerns have been raised about whether or not I have a conflict of interest. Counsel has advised that he doesn't believe there is, and I'm happy to be able to participate in this process. So, I'm currently the landscaping chair. I've been the landscaping chair for 10 years, so.
Anybody else? Yes, John?
As most of the board members know, I hope, but I just want for the record to disclose also that, although I do not have a personal interest in the subject at hand, apart from being a Reston Association member and general beneficiary, I am employed by the County of Fairfax that has a very direct financial interest in the success of Lake Anne, expansion of residential and commercial spaces, but I have no personal direct involvement in that, and I just wanted to disclose that I am indeed working for someone who does have an interest in it.
Very good. Well then, with that, what I'd like to do is, I'm just gonna provide a quick history. I think most people know this, and I think we've provided this as a part of the handouts, but I, like many of us in the room, have been involved in this redevelopment process as a member homeowner since 2004. It's one of the more, pardon the term, comprehensive efforts focusing on the development or redevelopment or revitalization of the Lake Anne area, the Lake Anne Plaza, et cetera. But while many studies and many issues had been brought to light about Lake Anne over the last two decades, the formal process began around 2004, where the county decided to take a more formal approach, revise the comprehensive text as it related to the Lake Anne land parcels, to see what could be done. The purpose for this was to focus on revitalizing an area which seemed to be going into, pardon my term, into decline, in terms of business, homeowner value, maintenance, infrastructure aging, what have you. And so, the Office of Community Revitalization of Fairfax County took over the effort of the revitalization initiative with regard to Lake Anne. OCR, as the office is called, actually has, I think, seven of these around the county, Lake Anne being one of them. And so there were many endeavors taken on, early on, beginning in 2004, 2005, involving the community. And the community in Lake Anne represents not only the plaza, the merchants, and the church owners, Crescent, but the neighborhoods around the lake, as well as the neighborhoods across the street in North Point. Clusters, homeowners associations, were all involved in this. And the process began in that timeframe. In around 2007, consultants were brought in, and this was to the joy of many of the residents and merchants at the time. The joke became, how many studies, how many analyses are we going to go through to get to the bottom line? But needless to say, a very thorough analysis, from a marketing standpoint, from a land use standpoint, from a residential standpoint, from a merchant use standpoint, as well as a transportation standpoint, many studies were done involving the community, involving the county, as well as the stakeholders, and how this might be brought about. Charrettes were initiated with the community back in the 2007 timeframe, and there were as many as five or six charrettes involving various stakeholders, including the county, including residents, including clusters around the lake, including homeowner associations across Barron Cameron, including the church, including the merchants, all having various interests and ideas and concepts as to how this would be developed, how they might be able to improve on the features and the facilities. All of this was intended to go into what ultimately came out of the county's efforts, the revised Comprehensive Plan Amendment as it relates to the Lake Anne revitalization, which was approved unanimously by the Board of Supervisors in 2009, at which point in time, another study was initiated, a feasibility analysis as to, how would we entertain going forward? What would be the best process to move forward? Would it be an RFP? Would we focus on a marketing development process? What would be the best approach? So feasibility analysis was done, which led to the ultimate decision of issuing an RFP. An RFP that today we're seeing the one winner or awardee as a result of a very extensive RFP process initiated back around the 2010, 2011 timeframe. In that process, all of the bidders, all of the people that were entertaining bidding on the redevelopment or revitalization of Lake Anne had two approaches. And this is what concerned the community from day one, going back to 2004. One approach was to redevelop Crescent apartments by themselves, without doing anything to the adjacent land parcels around the Lake Anne Plaza. The various stakeholders in the community said, if you're going to redevelop Crescent, it would be important for you to consider an overall consolidated revitalization approach. Look at all of the land units, including Reston's, including the plaza, including the church, including Heron House. Look at all these parcels and focus on a developer attacking all of that at the same time. That would be the community's preference. And in fact, that was written into the RFP as a priority. While credence would be given to a bidder that said, we are ready to redevelop Crescent, obviously, what the county was looking for and the way the RFP was written was, we'd prefer you to look at the consolidated approach, looking at all the land units involved. In so doing, if you go down that path, you then have to come back to us in your response to the RFP with basically some sort of acknowledgement that you have sat down, one last time, with each of the stakeholders, and got from them requirements, ideas, visions. Anything that has been left on the table needs to be taken off the table. That was an opportunity for that bidder to sit down with the likes of Reston Association, the Clusters, the homeowners associations, the merchants associations, everybody in that area to say, what do you want? What do you think is going to be the best approach? And that was led up, that led up to the bidders deciding whether they would bid just Crescent alone or they would bid the consolidated approach. At the end of the process, the award was made, I think back in August of this year, the announcement was finally made in August of this year, and it was made to the Lake Anne Development Partners. But do note, all of the stakeholders, up through that process, had access to see some of the proposals, some of the content, seeing some of the ideas that were being thought of as suggestions, as ideas. If we were to do this, what do you think? So all of the stakeholders have had significant say and significant participation over the last 10 years into how this RFP would be responded to. And I think as we see tonight, the winning proposal looked at the community's input significantly, highlighting what came out of the charrettes, out of the many studies, what have you, enhancing the line of sight between Barron Cameron and to the fountain to the lake, the lake being the primary asset, enhancing accessibility to the merchants, to the residents, taking into account, what are we going to do? Do not diminish the affordable housing component that is Crescent. All of these were taken into by the winning proposal. So that's the history. As of August 30th, we are now where we're at, where we are now dealing with a land exchange concept, a letter of intent to focus on making this proposal the winning design that I think it is. And so from that, what I'd like to do is just, my intent is, if you want to look at the history, I think we've done a good job of summarizing a lot of information, a lot of detail, but the emphasis here is, the community has been involved in this, and I being one of them purely as a member before I even got on the board, for the last 10-plus years. So, this is not something that came up in August. This is something that started well before 2004. So with that, I think who I'd like to have up next would be Mr. David Peter from the Lake Anne Development Partners.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. I'm David Peter. I am President and CEO of Republic, the Republic Family of Companies, and the Managing Member of Lake Anne Development Partners. First, let me once again thank you for your attention and consideration in this matter. I know firsthand from the various meetings we've hosted and discussions we've had with the various stakeholders that there is a lot to consider, because there is a lot of emotion tied up in this, on all sides. We certainly appreciate the perspectives, and we know that you are working to achieve a balance that's in the best interests of Lake Anne. It's easy to look with a narrow field of view at this one acre of land and sum it up as destroying our environment, but to do so gives no weight to the competing priorities of revitalization that are also at work here, and which were laid out by your counsel at the last meeting. With respect, there's an equal amount of emotion expressed by the merchants who have staked their livelihoods on the success of this revitalization and the success of what we are trying to do, and by the neighbors who live nearby as well. We very much respect the environment and the concerns that the people who would suggest you vote against this property exchange hold dear to their hearts, and we have listened to them. We've made what we believe are significant compromises to the form of the agreement over the last month, and we would beg your indulgence as we go through our formal proposal or presentation.
How are we doing?
If it pops up again. We had this problem last time. Except last time it took six or seven minutes. I think we're. Hang in there.
The good news is, we have candy up here.
All right.
My fault, not hers.
Wait a minute. John?
John's stealing the candy.
All right. Tonight, we're gonna talk about three things. Why Lake Anne needs this parking. Some of the environmental checks and balances that we have taken into account, and compromises we have tried to make to make this work. Why does Lake Anne need this parking? A renewed Lake Anne needs better parking than it has today. It needs convenient parking for the anchor store, which is planned to go out closest to Barron Cameron. It needs convenient parking to attract new merchants into the new expanded plaza, and it needs improved parking to support the existing merchants. So why the Reston Association parcel? This parcel that we've asked you to exchange to us is the most convenient for the existing merchants. It keeps all of the parking clustered along one road for logical and easy access to visitors, and it follows the line of retail and keeps parking within 500 feet of the storefronts for the existing merchants, which is required by county code. The next one. Also in line with industry parking standards, which are important to attracting new shopping and dining users. According to the Urban Land Institute, off-street parking should be highly visible from the street and should not be located farther than one block from the storefronts. The RA parcel meets this standard. We provided the board with a project parking strategy which showed 11 different sites that were considered in some form or another. The first is the Washington Plaza Baptist Church site, which, apart from not being an ideal location because of its location, that is not along the eastern edge, the churches got plans to redevelop their property, and they have a comprehensive plan that entitles them to do that. They have other uses for their property. We spoke with the Buddhist Temple site. While this church, this location would be excellent to serve the existing merchants, there's only so much parking that they can provide on that site because they use it for their own purposes, and it can't be used seven days a week. In addition, their site also has some additional development capacity to it. The Fellowship House parcel, which is number three on this map, Fellowship Square is pursuing their own redevelopment, and they've told us that their property is not available for any development cooperation with us other than the small amount that'll be donated for the widening out of Village Road. The MLK Church property, which is actually off the map where number four is aimed at, they actually are planning to, they're still working to build a sanctuary there and a worship center, and their property would be very far from the Lake Anne property. The Lake Anne property, the RA property itself, which is number five on the map, is clearly the best location in our view. It's in the center of the entire development of retail. It's also within 300 feet of the center of the Washington Plaza, which meets the code requirement. The Crescent Apartment site is actually, number six on the map, is actually planned to have over 1,500 parking spaces, which will serve the residential uses on that site. One suggestion was raised recently that we build into the side of the hill, which not only would wipe out one of the largest trees on the site, would actually conflict with where the residential units are gonna go today. There's suggestions that we build over or under the, not only the Larka parking lot, which is number seven, and the Millennium Bank parking lot, which is number eight. In fact, we have plans to build parking under both of those sites. The parking on the Millennium Bank side, which is number eight, is actually intended to serve the residences and offices in that building and not be open to the general public because of its awkward access. Number seven is under the Larka parking lot, which is the principal location where most of the rest of our parking would be, and it's already constrained, as we discussed last time, by the sewer line that runs through the property. Under or adjacent to the new grocery store, which is number nine on the map, that's our anchor. Obviously, we plan to put parking under that, although that's quite distant from the Washington Plaza and really would not work very well with, to serve the existing merchants. Then there was a suggestion of the upper lot, which is noted as number 10 on this plan. That lot, we've spent a lot of time studying, and there are a lot of reasons why it really just is a difficult sell. First and foremost, it's not on the eastern edge of the property, and it's not in line with the other parking locations. The worry there, as we're trying to sell to new merchants, is that if your customers come here, don't find parking, their alternative is to go out, go through a couple of traffic lights, go a quarter of a mile away, or nearly a half a mile away, through a residential neighborhood to get to this alternate site. And once you get there, assuming you make it, you still can't see the plaza from the parking garage until you exit it. It's also impossible to find an ADA compliant access from that site down to the plaza without building under the historic district or significantly altering the historic properties through that area. The last idea which was thrown out as an alternative during the course of our discussions was an alternative layout of the parking on the RA site, which would span over the chimney house road entrance. And we did look at that, although, in our view, looking at it, you'd actually wipe out more of the trees that are closest to the plaza. And whether it was built above ground or. And whether it was built above ground or below ground, you would significantly impact the street that's the access, only access point for those residents that park there. Didn't appear to be a viable alternative, in addition to being less attractive from its impacts on the trees, so we'll move on instead of dwelling on this. As I mentioned, the upper lot presents some very significant challenges. We believe retailers would be very skeptical of this location. The next one. It also doesn't meet the county code, whereas the RA lot would. And remember that that's cement to serve the existing plaza. Retail professionals favor adjacent parking. These two quotes from a couple of different sources just elaborate on the fact that parking needs to be close, needs to be convenient, needs to not be confusing, and needs to be obvious to the tenants if we're going to attract new tenants, new visitors, and a thriving business climate, so. This, as I mentioned before, the idea of building the alternate layout on the chimney house, there's been a lot of talk about this wreath of trees that you see over the plaza. And in fact, most of the trees you see in this picture would actually still be there in the plan and our design. Admittedly, some of the trees that are farther back behind the front row of trees would be gone, but most of the trees you actually see in this image would still be there after our proposed location is built. The chimney house alternative would actually wipe out almost everything you see in this view because it would clear out all of the trees closest to the circle. Next slide. The garage in the RA parcel, we believe, balances the needs. It provides 120 spaces for the existing merchants. It leaves about a third of the parcel completely undisturbed. It would be situated, and has been situated, to minimize the loss of trees, and it would preserve the trees that are most visible from the plaza, along with additional buffers. As Mr. Simon stated last time when he submitted his written comments, it's a hard decision sometimes to go against the idea of preserving nature, but sometimes, I think as he said, realism has to prevail over idealism. Otherwise, we wouldn't have a lot of the things that are, that are built today that we enjoy, including that lake. Move on now to some of the environmental checks and balances and features of our proposal that we think are significant. One of the things we've proposed and beefed up in the revision to our letter of intent is that we are now three to five years before the construction would begin on the RA property. We have engaged an arborist of our own, which we would have done anyway, but we've done sooner than otherwise would have. And some of the advice is that by preparing trees in advance will increase their success of survival. We plan to undertake a root pruning program that would help the trees learn to essentially remap their roots so that they survive when the trees around them and construction occurs around them. We would undertake pest protection. We would add temporary irrigation and moisture monitoring to help ensure that those trees are healthy when they get to the point of the development happening around it. Next slide. Don Zimar, who is actually here tonight, has done preservation work in a number of notable locations, and he believes that intervention like what we propose here can make a significant difference in the survivability of the trees that are on here. According to him, 80 to 90% of the trees that we hope to save will survive if we do all of the steps that we talked about in the previous slides, so. There are additional safeguards that will come out of our development of the Lake Anne Village Center that will help the lake. Currently, all of the water that runs off of the Crescent property and off of that parking lot goes directly into the lake. Under the new stormwater guidelines, we will actually capture 100% of that and treat it on-site in various stormwater features. That will actually result in reduced runoff into the lake rather than anything that's worse than what's happening today. We've also proposed bioretention and other environmental site features that will help to clean the water that comes into the lake. We've also proposed to assist in the funding of the dredging of Lake Anne, and obviously, while we're in construction, anything that, silt that might otherwise run off our site will be captured by the environmental features during construction. Next slide. We've also proposed a number of state-of-the-art green practices, including rain gardens, buildings designed with low-impact architecture, and modern techniques to limit disruption and to improve the environmental output of the project. Next project, next slide. We've also added some things that will enhance and protect the natural environment. Part of our proposal, as revised, includes a $100,000 escrow that will be placed at the time the property is transferred to us, which will be used for essentially planting additional trees or enhancing tree canopy or otherwise acquiring properties that RA might find of interest, and we'll work through all the details of that and give RA the flexibility to choose how that money is spent. We would clean up the existing channel that runs down through the property that we proposed to give, which is still on the table. We would promote biodiversity with native plantings, protect steep slopes, and also remove the underground fuel tanks at the gas station, which potentially represent a future threat. Next slide. We are committed to open space in parks, and in fact, 15% of our entire site will be open space. There is a new crescent trail system that will add nearly a mile of trails and tie in with the existing blue and green trails that you all maintain. And there's a variety of other parks and upgrades that are planned throughout the new development. We also have proposals to promote alternative modes of transportation, including a bike-sharing station that we've proposed to help pilot, although we have decided to move that off of the RA property and put it elsewhere within the community. We will add transit stops and bus shelters, and as noted before, we would expand connectivity to the blue and green trail systems. Excuse me. Next slide. So, how have we compromised to make this work? Next slide. There are a number of major changes to the letter of intent for the land exchange. One of the first and foremost ones that I'd like to draw your attention to is that the size of the RA parcel has, that would be given to us is actually reduced by approximately one-third. The estimated area is now just the area under the garage with a modest area around it to permit construction. So instead of a full one acre, we would receive only about seven-tenths of an acre. The size of the property that we would give back in return, however, remains at 1.1 acres, and we've reconfigured the shape of that site to not only, we've actually not only reconfigured the shape of that site, but also we have realigned the road access to Baron Cameron, which will allow that to protect some of those trees that are along the, near the underpass. Next slide. We have conducted a tree survey already, which would have been normally part of the process, but we've done much sooner, and we have moved the structure as close as possible to North Shore Drive, which minimizes the loss of trees through the construction of the proposed parking facility. And as I said before, the proposed access to Baron Cameron has been moved to avoid the three champion oak trees that exist right on that property near the underpass. In fact, one of them was questionable the way it was lined before. We've moved that so that that will be clearly saved. Next slide. As I mentioned before, the bike-sharing station that we proposed originally to put on the northern end of the RA property, we will move to other locations within the plaza. We're certainly not eliminating that as a concept. We think that's an important transportation feature, but we've committed to leaving that end of the site essentially untouched and moving those features to other locations. In addition, there was a standard introduced in our discussions with the various meetings, with the Environmental Advisory Committee and others, about the quality of the land that we're giving. And we're committed, as part of the letter of intent, as it's revised, that the land that we are giving would have more, equal to or more large trees in it than the property that we would be impacting by the construction of the garage. I think that's a major, major point. Next slide. As I mentioned before, we have a $100,000 escrow that would be placed at the time of the land transfer. That property could be, that money could be used for tree canopy enhancement, reforestation, planting of new trees, or alternatively, as RA decides to acquire other properties that may be of interest. Instead of focusing on some of the capital repair projects, we have agreed that we will contribute to the channel stabilization, cleaning up and removal of invasive species, engaging in the root pruning and other restoration of the remaining RA property before we get started, and obviously, the cleaning up and dredging of Lake Anne when its time comes. Lastly, I would really ask you to please remember that this new garage is for the benefit of the existing merchants. Our intent is to get them healthy before any of the other development on their existing parking lots happens. Next slide. I have a few quotes here from some of the merchants down there, just talking about the pain and suffering that they go through on a day-to-day basis as they try and work through the off-seasons and the difficulties that have happened. Next slide as well. These people are the folks that we're working for on this. This is the folks that we want to help make healthy so that when the new development happens down there, they will not be put out of business, but they will actually thrive and benefit from the changes that we're going to make. The next slide. And these folks who live nearby and who work and rely on Lake Anne for their livelihood are all in favor of this swap, so. Thank you.
Appreciate that. I'll open it up to the board for questions and answers, and I believe that Ken and I think John is here as well, if there are anything that they might be able to help on as well. So this is a good time to ask any questions you might have. Anyone? Tim?
Was I recognized?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just curious. Do you think it makes sense for the, to reduce to 0.7 acres instead of just taking the whole lot? Because doesn't that just sort of put the maintenance problem for the remaining onto RA? We'll have a sort of an odd piece of land to take care of?
Well, I mean, you probably have a lot of odd pieces of land that you maintain, although I would suggest to you that this parcel is essentially going to be open space in its natural condition, so I'm not sure how much maintenance is really involved in it, but you know, as a practical matter, I don't necessarily mind that we would take on the responsibility of that in the definitive agreement. It's really a relatively minor piece there, but I don't believe there's a whole lot of maintenance that would be required of it in its natural conditions, so.
Okay.
The $100,000 that would be escrowed for planting, could that also be used for other sort of environmental services kinds of projects along the trails or things like that? I mean, like if they wanted to do, you know, a permeable trail surface or something like that?
I don't know that we would be opposed to that. I think we were trying to propose something and frame it in a way where it's actually accomplishing the goal that was stated to us of preserving the tree canopy. And we had proposed it initially to use it to either acquire existing property that would have trees on it or to plant other trees elsewhere, but I'm not, I'm not personally opposed to that, but we could work out the details of that in the definitive agreement, and obviously, it would be left up to RA. As I said, how that money would be spent, I guess, giving you all more options isn't problematic to me. Go ahead, Tim.
Yeah, I have another question. This is really unfair because you arranged a wonderful tour down at Washington Harbor in which you introduced us to the architect, Arthur Cotton Moore, who showed us this fantastic development that really has a lot in common, I think, with what, a lot of the problems that we have at Lake Anne. And one of the things that impressed me there was that the whole bunch of interesting and difficult problems have been solved, including the flood problem from the Potomac, putting in gates, having it all blend in naturally, and all the parking is invisible. And it strikes me that, you know, one of the problems we're all having is adding an above-ground, multiple-story parking garage to Lake Anne isn't, doesn't sit well in replacing the land. So I'm just wondering, if you had to do the project without the land swap, how would you go about doing it? What would you do? Because I know you guys are smart, and I know you could figure it out, but I'm just curious as to what your thoughts are.
You're right, that is an unfair question. You know, I think as I said before, there, we looked at a lot of other places where parking could theoretically be put. Building more parking under the grocery store is possible, or building more parking next to the grocery store sooner than it would otherwise be normally built in the phasing of the development is possible, but that doesn't really address the needs of the merchants who will be impacted by the removal of parking and convenient parking, the most convenient parking, while the development's happening. And, you know, part of the goal is not, you know, not to put them out of business so that our stuff leases up faster. I mean, the point is really to make them healthier, and part of our whole phasing strategy with our offer to the county was framed around bringing new health to this, fixing the road entrance, fixing the visibility issue, expanding the trade area, and allowing people to know that there's something worth coming to here. And a big part of that is parking that's very convenient to it. It's a difficult, difficult answer because a lot of the rest of the site is already accounted for, quite frankly, so.
I don't know if the, an urban setting is pretty different to, I mean Georgetown's, you know, don't you think they have a different... I was going to say, it seems like an urban setting is, is different than a suburban setting in terms of what people are used to doing and cabbying and not having cars at all. I wouldn't know that the environments are equivalent, but I agree that Washington Harbor is a beautiful...
Which was a republic project, right?
It was, yes.
I do like the idea of gates along Lake Anne. I said, I do like the idea of putting gates in like they have in Washington Harbor around Lake Anne to prevent the plaza from being flooded.
Agreed. Only work if you pull them up soon enough, like the ones at Washington Harbor. We don't own the building anymore, but those folks that messed it up forgot to put them up.
David, I have a question. I think you said you looked at the 11 options. When you looked at the 11 options, were there any other, other than republic people from your organization with you when you looked at those options?
Oh, we've looked at these options really for the last year and a half, two years that we've been working on this.
What are you talking about?
We are traffics, traffic engineers, our architects, our designers, our civil engineers, our retail leasing experts. It's not just me and a couple of my employees working on it. This is a whole team of professionals and some of the best professionals in the business who have contributed to this process and looking at those other, other locations to figure out what's the best way to go about it. And the thing that we kept coming back to really that overrode everything is that, you know, the parking that needs to be close and convenient for those existing merchants has, that's the biggest fundamental stumbling block with most of the other possibilities. And some of those possibilities aren't really possibilities. They were just ideas that have other reasons why they don't work, so.
Another question related to parking. If you were to expand the existing parking immediately adjacent to the commercial center in Lake Anne, there's surface parking already there right along with the loading dock. Could you not put similar amount of parking underground right there without having to build on the adjacent property, which is already treated?
We are already building under almost the entire parking lot that you see out there today, with the exception of the area where the sewer line runs through it, where we can't do it. I would tell you, if that sewer line wasn't there, or if it was possible to move it, it'd be a lot easier. We could put, you know, 300 or 400 more parking spaces under there, but it's not possible because of the condition where the, that sewer line runs through the middle of it.
What I'm suggesting is the parking right adjacent to the J or the P of the surface parking.
That, that's a variation of the chimney house alternate plan... That, that's a variation of the chimney house alternate plan that was suggested. What was actually suggested to us was building it partially above the surface spaces, but then still touching part of the RA property, which, as I said before, would wipe out most of the trees you actually do see from the plaza, but would also impact the only access in and out of those people's homes. That's the only parking lot. There's only one way in and out for the chimney house and Washington Plaza cluster homes that access off of Chimney House Road. To build up, you'd have to have something that's at least 15 or 18 feet high on the first level for a fire truck to drive through it. And then a second level on top of that, you'd have something that towers over the top of the existing Lake Anne Plaza. And if you were to go underground, and I don't believe it would be physically possible to build it right up against the building where I think you're talking about, but to go down underground, you would remove the only access to those people's homes and parking during construction. And it would, I think, would be rather infeasible physically.
Anybody else? Well, then I'll take a moment now. I know a lot of people have been waiting patiently. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for being here.
Might want to hang on just in case, but I know where you are. We'll now allow, everybody's been patiently waiting here. Okay, thank you. I have a lot of people here. So, we'll do this as comfortably and as informatively as we can. I'm going to ask everybody to take, if they will, just to remind them to give their name and their mailing address when they come up to speak, as well as to try to adhere as best you can, for the sake of everybody that's presenting here tonight, three minutes for your presentation. And so with that, I have, the first speaker is Mr. Bob Simon.
Thank you for letting me speak. Bob Simon, early resident.
Note that, please. Not arguing.
This was, from my point of view, a remarkable presentation, because this is not all that Dave Peter, the head of Republic, does for a living. He hasn't banked his all on this and spent all his time on this. He's the president of a big national company. And unlike such, in my experience, he actually has done an enormous amount of work on this rather than delegating it. And if the people who generally come before this board and ask for more community participation are here, they should not talk about it, because this has been a wonderful example of how a chief executive can listen and can act on what the community wants. So, having said that, I'll give you a theory that I have. And that is that when you're dealing with an urban plan, the plan comes first and the trees come second. When you're dealing with a suburban plan, you can often bring the trees first and the plan second. But this is an urban situation. Now, loss of trees is something that you've heard quite a bit about from people who don't want to see any of those trees cut down. My answer to them, and I've shared this with a few of you, is that there are 135,246,112 trees in Reston, by the latest count. So, let's have a sense of proportion. As a matter of fact, Republic has done what it could to preserve some trees. And a remarkable job. I've studied the plan, and I think it's a remarkable job that they've done. Now, this land swap is what we're here to talk about. And it seems to me that having waited for seven or eight years to see Lake Anne revitalized, and remembering that before we got started, we had a plan for quite a few of these high-rises that are now being proposed, I think the idea of discretion and taking time and all of that, I think we've had enough time spent, enough discretion. And I beg, beg all of you to vote on this. One element that you may not be aware of that I think is quite significant, the response to RFP was held by seven different organizations. The planning staff eliminated five of those, and there were two left. And the Board of Supervisors urged on by the planning staff did something that they don't do often. I'd like to say it's unique, but I'm not qualified to say that. I know it's unusual. They awarded this to Republic, although financially, the other of the two companies surviving the cut was more financially profitable for the county. The county would have made out better financially if they had not given it to Republic. And the reason they gave it to Republic was for quality. Of course, I've been hollering for that kind of thing forevermore. So, this is a case where it was quality. And so, I'll just end up by saying, I don't want to hold my breath anymore. Let's vote on this tonight.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Appreciate that very much. I have Diane Lewis.
My name is Diane Lewis, and I live at 2156 Golf Course Drive on the Reston South Golf Course. Rescue Reston. I'm not speaking for Rescue Reston. I'm speaking for myself. Those trees belong to me and every other RA member. I did not agree to give them away for somebody else's benefit. They are commons. And what's happening here is called Tina. There is no alternative. Unless you give away your trees, you will have no Lake Anne revitalization. I don't think that's true. Tina is all over the world. They're telling people who own the commons, who own their water, who own their land, you have no alternative. You gotta take our deal, because if you don't, you're not going to get this special perk. I don't believe that. The other thing I want to point out is that our neighbors don't know this is happening. I talked to two people at work, not my work, their workplaces, separate workplaces. They had no idea this was happening. There are RA members and they're young people. The young folk don't know this is happening to them. I've lived my life. I don't have any children. I don't have any grandchildren. I challenge the parents in this room, the grandparents in this room. Think of your children. And I know some very, very unhappy and sad people in the Philippines who would love to have our trees.
Thank you. Carol Ivory.
Carol Ivory, 11582 Wood Hollow Court, Reston, Virginia 20191. Okay. Good evening. I'm here to speak as Chair of the RA Environmental Advisory Committee. On November 12th, we passed the following resolution. The EAC supports the revitalization of Lake Anne, but we find one element of the LADP plan unacceptable because it's in violation of existing RA and county environmental policies. The EAC does not support the proposed land swap, and we urge the RA Board to refrain from signing the letter of intent that would exchange a parcel of dedicated forested open space for the purpose of constructing a parking garage. This proposed exchange sets a dangerous and unacceptable precedent for the whole Reston community. We face massive redevelopment now and in the coming years. If you're willing to sacrifice one of the oldest stands of trees in Reston for a parking garage, then at any time for another attractive project, any piece of protected open space in Reston is up for grabs. Reston Association has a stated commitment to protect and preserve our environmental resources. The RA Board has approved various policies providing that there shall be no net loss of natural areas, and undisturbed natural areas should be preserved to the greatest extent possible. The 2009 amendment to the Fairfax County Comprehensive Plan clearly states that in Land Unit C, the existing tree canopy should be preserved to the greatest extent possible. These policies have no meaning and no effect if they are only applied to easy situations. As stewards of the Reston environment, you have to make every effort to apply these policies to difficult situations. That's what policies are for. Reston is known worldwide as a planned community that values its open space and its natural resources. According to the community survey conducted last spring, protecting the air and water quality, keeping the scenic beauty of Reston, and preserving natural areas is essential to over 90% of the respondents in making Reston a great place to live. Trees play a large role in all of this. Trees absorb greenhouse gases such as ozone and carbon dioxide. Trees produce oxygen. Trees absorb massive amounts of storm water. Trees cool the air. Large trees, like the ones on the RA parcel, have, do all these things exponentially better than small trees. The trees on the RA parcel intercept over 2,275,000 gallons of storm water each year and reduce atmospheric carbon by over 20 tons per year. It's easy to think there are plenty of trees in Reston. We just heard that from Mr. Simon, and I thank you for counting them. But the Reston tree canopy is, as measured in 2002, was only 38%, well short of the 45% county goal, and it's shrinking, not increasing. Let's look at tree loss in Lake Anne alone. Recently, the United Christian Parish cleared two acres of trees for their development. Up to 537 trees will be lost when the Fairway Apartments are redeveloped. Even more trees will be lost with the Fellowship House redevelopment, and there will be significant tree loss on the Crescent Apartment property. This RA parcel that we own and control becomes even more critical considering the overall tree loss confronting Lake Anne. Lake Anne revitalization has been under discussion for 10 years now, but this proposed land swap did not come up until August of this year. And the EAC and other key groups were not made aware of it until just four weeks ago. We believe that in this brief time, no real effort has been made to find alternative locations for these 120 parking places. Two days ago, we received the amended LOI that in our opinion offers a worse deal than the first one. Then, less than 24 hours ago, we received a document called the Parking Strategy that offers no serious exploration to parking alternatives. The initial Lake Anne plan done in the early 60s designated this parcel as protected open space. This was a strategic decision. Please make another strategic decision tonight. We ask that you not approve the land exchange and that you support a request by the LADP for an extension from the county, providing time to seriously explore other parking options. Remember, you are the stewards of this property, and you are obligated to protect it. Thank you.
I do want to remind everybody, because I'm trying to keep the presentations, your comments to three minutes, because I feel very sorry for the person as the last person on this extensive list. So, please, if you can keep your comments to three minutes, for the sake of everybody that's in here tonight, think of your fellow members and neighbors, and try not to go over your time limit if at all possible. I do appreciate that very much. That's the reason why you're hearing the fanciful tune. So, thank you. I hope not to remind again. Gina Laguna?
Can you clarify, can you say, Ken, I'm sorry, groups, people representative group?
Three minutes. I'm going to give the group tonight three minutes, if I may. We have an extensive list here, and...
That doesn't work out.
We've had five weeks to know about this.
For the sake of the number of people here, I'm going to keep it at three minutes. If you go over, we'll do our best to work with you. Again, we have an extensive number of people here. Please understand that some folks want to present. And again, feel sorry for the last person on the, at the back of the list here. So, just think about them as well. So, when you hear it go off, let us know where you're at, and we'll work with you. But I'm trying to keep this to three minutes so we can get to a meaningful place where we can take a vote. Thank you. Again.
Hello, my name is Gina Laguna, and I live in, at Crescent Apartment for nine years at 535 Cameron Crescent Drive. While you are talking about the land swap and the potential loss of trees, please give equal concern to about the people swap. The Crescent tenants love this community for its excellent school, safe neighborhood, and closer to our work. My own son was in the Reston Magazine for his work as a counselor at the Reston Association summer camp. He graduated with honors from Southern High School, and he's now on the Dean List at the Virginia Tech. He's majoring in engineering. This is the type of opportunity Crescent residents have received by living in this neighborhood. We are facing the possible loss of our homes. The Crescent tenants and boys are working with the Crescent Developer Community Preservation Development Corporation to prevent this from happening. The development will impact the 181 families at Crescent. We are supporting this new development, and surely we will have many chances to work through. We hope the Reston community can take a moment to consider Crescent families while discussing the land swap. Help us prevent a people swap and find ways to move through progress with the Lake Anne development. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ken, I'm good. I'll give up my time for somebody else behind me.
All right. All right.
That means we have three extra minutes?
If I may, if I may, if I may continue. Richard Kennedy?
Good evening. My name's Richard Kennedy. I live at 11441 Waterview Cluster, and we're kind of a neighbor of Lake Anne and enjoy it very much. We've raised, my wife and I have lived in Reston for 37 years. We've lived at our current location for 24 years. We've raised three children and enjoy six grandchildren that love to visit the Lake Anne Plaza. And I will try to be, I'll be, hope to beat the noisy gong here and be brief, and I know that's important to you as well for a long night. This land swap is a very difficult issue. Some have presented it as a need for parking versus loss of valuable trees. And there's a lot of good ideas on both sides of that question. But the real issue here is whether the redevelopment of Lake Anne goes forward, whether it goes forward to really meet our commitment to affordable housing for all in the area, to rediscover, really, the genius of the urban plaza as a community crossroads and meeting place with a vibrant economy. I think LADP and Republic has laid out a very compelling case for why this is the best place for the parking that is absolutely essential to the economic viability of Lake Anne, both on the short term and the long term. I believe that RA has negotiated an excellent set of enhancements to the swap as reported in your paper tonight. Reston members would clearly be getting a fair swap and perhaps more. As, are there other working parking alternatives? I don't see any. And Republic went through a list of 11. Most of them weren't even, couldn't even seriously be considered. I don't see any workable alternatives. There was one presented on the upper part of the Heron House parking area, but that was addressed by Rick Thompson in a letter to you in great detail. I commend that to you. It's a compelling case for the parcel that we need. We're proposing for a swap. Cheryl Terrio has made a very eloquent presentation of her rationale. I'm not going to try to give you a pedestrian effort to repeat that, but I commend it to you because it's a very strong argument. Now, I think tonight you have an important decision to make. No one in Reston wants to see the loss of natural tree areas, unless there's a compelling need. There is a compelling need to develop Lake Anne, which embodies the vision of Reston. Thank you.
Glenn Walker?
In the interest of time, I'll pass. Thank you.
Melissa Gilde?
I'm Melissa Gilde, 11928 Escalante Court. I spoke to you last time about the age of the trees in this parcel, that many of them are over 150 years old. I agree with the need for development. I see the need for parking. I disagree that the options have been fully explored. My esteemed colleague, Don Zamora, is here. I've worked with him on a project to save trees in Washington Grove, Maryland. CSX said that was impossible. Amazingly enough, once pushed, they came up with an engineering solution, and that was a federal project. That was much more difficult to deal with than this project. I oppose the land swap, as I've said. I do not think that we should give away our protected natural areas that are in trust for a piece of property along the state right of way. There are other options. There are some assumptions that I believe are faulty. Peter Del Tridici, a botanist at Harvard, said, "You cannot restore ecology on disturbed soils unless it's marginally disturbed," meaning by agriculture. Regardless of how much money you're getting for tree planting, if you're planting these on construction soils, you will not see these trees being replaced. And you wouldn't in your lifetime anyhow, or even in our children's lifetimes. You can't replace soils. You cannot manufacture soils that replace existing soils. It's impossible. NASA says it takes 1,000 years to make a soil profile. Stormwater is much more well-managed by existing trees over 12 inches caliper, that means over 24 years old approximately, depends on the tree, and more well-managed in intact soil profiles. So yes, we have a lot of trees here, but we don't have a lot of trees compared to what we need. And we aren't going to get them just by tree planting. The average urban tree does not live to an age that's old enough to provide us with trees that will properly manage our stormwater. Development is going to be a constant. An urban model does not require that we neglect our environment. The DC model, for example, take the DC model, for example. I've been working a lot with DDOT. They are removing pavement. They are providing more tree volume, soil volume, and they have large trees in the district that are very, very old. Do not, please do not dip into our natural area trust. We're going to see redevelopment every 50 years, and I don't want to see us to continue doing this. Thank you.
Diane Bluest?
Hi, guys. Diane Bluest, 12132 Corn Lane. I'm here tonight speaking just for myself, no organization, no one else. And I'm here to ask you to reject the proposed land swap at Lake Anne because it's in violation of RA's policies on open space and natural areas, and I think it's a bad deal. If you approve this deal, you will give up an RA natural area for a parcel that serves as, in part, as a drainage ditch for Baron Cameron. RA staff will have to maintain that parcel along Baron Cameron, but it's not usable for wildlife habitat or for recreation, with the exception of a bike path that cuts through it. With the developer now offering to take only a portion of the RA parcel, we're going to be responsible for the maintenance of the trees on the fringe of that parcel. And those trees are going to be negatively impacted by the parking garage. I think it's a bad deal for RA. How do we get to a point where you're being told you have to make a decision without the time to do the full analysis of the impacts of that decision? We got here sadly through bad management. It's no secret that neither the environmental staff nor the Environmental Advisory Committee was brought into the picture until far too late in this process, two months after the land swap was proposed. If that simple step had been taken, you would have gotten advice on the true value of the parcels in question. You would have been told this deal runs counter to RA policy in the County Comprehensive Plan. You would have been given suggestions on how to make the RA parcel an integral part of a revitalized Lake Anne by adding improvements so that it can be used for outdoor education and recreation. You didn't get this input until late in the game. You received the information on the new proposal just 48 hours ago, certainly not enough time to study the implications of the new proposal. You have a tough job. We're not going to please everyone all of the time, but if you keep your eye on what is best for our entire community, follow our policies and principles, listen to your own in-house advisors, and heed the results of community surveys, you're going to please most of your constituents most of the time. Please, don't ever offer up RA natural areas for development. The alternatives in this case were taken off the table when someone agreed that the best place to put that parking lot was land owned by all RA members. If I were the developer, I would have jumped at the deal and offered just what the developer offered you, a drainage area for Baron Cameron that has little value to our community. The default position for RA should always be to look at already developed parcels for redevelopment, not our open spaces and natural areas. When someone looks at land without buildings on it and says, "Let's take that. There's nothing there", tell them to come back with an acceptable plan. It may be more difficult. It may take more time. But in the end, we'll get a Reston that will be redeveloped that's true to our goals and the ideals of the community, not a Reston that reflects the easiest or most profitable plan for a developer. Please, fix the mistakes that brought us to this uncomfortable position, and please vote against the land swap. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Mowbray?
Hello, I'm Bob Mowbray. I live at 2218 Wheelwright Court here in Reston. We've all been talking about trees, species of trees, numbers of trees, sizes of trees. We should be talking about ecosystems and the services they provide. LADP wants to destroy a healthy, more or less natural ecosystem of comparatively rare and Reston upland hardwoods, not just a bunch of trees, and trade it for degraded, unhealthy ecosystem overgrown with invasive exotics. Considering the state of our environment, we should not consider removing any native species from either of these two ecosystems. LADP's latest revision of the LOA, LOI, would destroy a healthy ecosystem while perhaps saving a few trees to landscape the parking garage. Healthy ecosystems provide important ecosystem services. This is the entire ecosystem. We're not talking just about the trees. We're talking about the soils, all the undergrowth, the fungi and everything living in the soil. They sequester and store carbon dioxide. They reduce volume and velocity of stormwater flow. They allow increased infiltration of precipitation and store water in the soil. They maintain soil fertility, soil structure, and soil texture. They prevent soil erosion and sedimentation of our streams and lakes. They provide habitats for wildlife, including resident and migratory songbirds. They provide cooling shade and shelter from winds, helping to reduce energy use for cooling and heating, and they add beauty to our lives. Perhaps you can add some more. As Reston Association Board of Directors, you are responsible for ensuring that these services are not lost. Your predecessors acknowledged this responsibility by approving various policies providing that there shall be no net loss of natural areas and undisturbed natural areas should be preserved to the greatest extent possible. They intended this policy to apply to all development or redevelopment in Reston, not just RA property or the property of RA members. That is why they forwarded the policies to the county, DRB, and P&amp;Z. You and we have been remiss in honoring this responsibility by allowing ecosystems to be destroyed throughout Reston in recent years. The United Parish Church cleared two acres of trees. Up to 537 mature trees will be lost when the Fairway Apartments are redeveloped. More trees will be lost with the Fellowship House redevelopment, and there will be significant tree loss in the Crescent Fellowship property. Excuse me, the Crescent Apartment property. Trees are being removed right now at Sunrise Valley Elementary School. As others have noted, Fairfax County has a goal of achieving 45% tree canopy cover. Reston recently had a tree canopy cover of only 38%, and we are moving in the wrong direction. Don't add the RA property at Lake Anne to the list of ecosystems destroyed in the name of progress. Let's show that we deserve the title of Tree City. Thank you.
Edward Mundel?
First, let me say that I came this evening, and I was not prepared...
Your name and address, just for the record.
My address is 11400 Washington Plaza West. That's Heron House. But I came this evening, and I wasn't prepared as to what was going to go on here, but I've listened to the presentations given by other people. And what seems, it seems to, but before I go into my thoughts about this, I'd like to explain that I'm a newcomer to Reston. I've only been here about four months. And I moved here, I'm 80 years of age. I moved here because I thought I would like to move into a situation similar to that which my father enjoyed, when my father lived in Ealing, which is in West London, which had more trees than any other borough in London. Lots of fruit trees. You could actually pick fruit in the streets. But I moved here because I wanted this kind of atmosphere. But I'm also a realist. I look at Lake Anne, and I look around the plaza there, and it's somewhat moribund. And it seems that most of the people who are standing up here, who are arguing against building this garage, this parking space, are not really concerned about the welfare of the Lake Anne area. They're more concerned with saving a few trees. Now, I like trees too. I have a property where I have 160 trees in Vienna, which I hope to sell one day. But I don't have too much to say. You can see that I'm not prepared. But I think I made a good observation that most of the people who are standing up and giving their point of view have absolutely no concern for Lake Anne. Because you keep talking about the trees, and none of you have actually proposed a better idea of where to put the garage or the parking. If you had done that, then you would have a case. But you can't suggest a place. That's all I have to say.
Susan Burwell, please?
Good evening, all. My name is Susan Burwell. I've spoken to you all before. I live in Waterview Cluster, and I own Reston Hughes Bookshop at 1623 Washington Plaza North. But tonight, I've been asked by someone who couldn't be here, Cheryl Terrio, to read her letter that she sent to the board, and reading it to you verbatim. Five years ago, Reston Association's initial efforts to restore the streams and watershed damaged by erosion met with irate concern from many about the loss of trees necessitated by that project. Today is generally acknowledged that this short-term loss of some trees was necessary to benefit the greater system, and the project areas are deemed beautiful. The Lake Anne Community Redevelopment Project has a similar goal, the long-term restoration of Reston's first, and some say only, village center. Lake Anne Village is symbolic of the vision that created Reston. Bob Simon's seven goals describe a balance of the need, a balance of the need for housing for all, diversity within a community, amenities and beauty, structural and natural. Lake Anne Development Partners has been selected to lead this redevelopment, at least in part, because of the sensitivity that they and their architects have shown to the original vision. Its plan provides for much-needed diversity in housing, as well as the promise of revitalization of the village retail and commercial base. In a truly mixed-use community, the commercial and residential sectors are interdependent. Looking at the total site, the unused and neglected 1.01-acre RA partial under consideration by this board is essential to make this redevelopment work. No other parking site will sensibly benefit the existing and new portions of the plaza with so little disruption to the residential community. Reston Association owns and maintains 1,350 acres of open space, one-seventh of the total land in Reston. This controversial 1.01-acre, which is hardly the gem of RA's properties, is 0.0751% of the total acreage. And this percentage is not lost in exchange. A slightly larger partial is being swapped, which will provide a needed green buffer next to Baron Cameron at the Crescent property. Additionally, not all the trees in this site will be removed for the parking structure, and RA will...
as a link between the county and the Lake Anne landowners and residents and businesses. We, during the process of developing the Conference of Plan Amendment, we were involved sort of from the economic study through the charrettes and on into the actual writing of the amendment. And we recognized, among all the various issues, that parking was a difficult and critical problem. And one of the parts of the problem was what did you do for parking for the businesses while these wonderful things were being constructed in the existing parking lot? And we talked about this a fair amount and sort of batted around various alternatives that one might consider with the idea that we might recommend to the county an idea if we could come up with one. And we never did. And I think that the proposal that LADP has made to use this piece of land, albeit that everyone is disappointed that some trees have to be taken down, this seems to be the best solution that we have seen and we know of no other alternatives. So we recommend that the board approve this swap, and we think that it's critical to the, both the feasibility and the success of the Lake Anne revitalization. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick Thompson?
Good evening. I'm Rick Thompson. I live at 11400 Washington Plaza West at Lake Anne, the Heron House. I am the president of the Board of Directors of the Lake Anne condominium. As you probably know, it is a mixed-use condominium. We have 101 residential users and 30 commercial users. Based on the October 24th meeting, the condominium has responded to both the RA board and to the community regarding questions about the use of our upper lot location as an alternative parking site. We have submitted a comparison of the upper lot with the RA parcel proposed by the land swap. In our opinion, based on its objective characteristics, the upper lot is not an alternative, a good alternative. So I think you all have copies of that, and, you know, it's not prepared by an engineer. It's just the logical, what does it look like? How would we use it? So. We also have polled our own residential members. We do know that our commercial owners favor the parcel requested by the LOI. Of the 75 residential owners polled, 68 favored the use of the RA swap proposal for the site of the parking garage. We have asked our members and others in the community to send emails to RA board expressing both the importance of the Lake Anne redevelopment project and the preference for the use of the RA land. We think that there has been a substantial number of emails sent expressing those points of view, and that's supporting the incorporation of use of the RA parcel for parking garage. All along, Lake Anne's revitalization effort has been community-based. We've heard about the decades-long activities that have been going on since 2003, at least. Whether we, we have all understood that for change to happen, some things would not be able to remain the same. After more than a decade, the redevelopment of Lake Anne has become a reality. Given the resources we have to work with, we think we have a great plan that LADP has presented to us, and parking is definitely the enabler. Without parking, the plan will probably not succeed. Without parking, our commercial owners will be severely at risk, and support for the plan may well crumble, and the county will move ahead without the redevelopment of the plaza. We don't know that would happen, but what we do know is that the county is driven by their own financial reality that compels them to move ahead. I urge the RA board not to take that risk and to let reason prevail by approving the land swap. Thank you.
Bear with me, and I apologize. Corb? Gunnetek? Cannot read the handwriting very well. Do we have an address? Deer Point Way 1526? Thank you. I apologize.
Carla Gonzalez, 1526 Deer Point Way, Reston. I have lived 11 years in Reston. I come from a different background, Mexico City, so certainly I value the trees, and my family does too. On the other hand, I would love to see Lake Anne revitalization. The place needs it, and in fact, it's urgent for the community. I would not like to see Lake Anne sitting and waiting for another 10 years. The place has so much potential. I cannot believe, but on the other hand, I cannot believe there isn't another, an alternative solution to the parking for the existing merchants. I believe a greater effort needs to be made in order to find the extra 120 spaces of parking. I challenge the developers to find a better solution. Thank you.
Connie Hart?
Connie, you're up.
Connie?
Connie. Okay. I'm Connie Hartke, Reston Citizens Association, 2201 Quartermaster. I'm speaking tonight for Rachel Muir, 2171 Cabots Point Lane, who could not be here. An abridged version of her letter. "This evening, you are poised to make a decision regarding the proposed redevelopment of Lake Anne. Just to be clear, no one has voiced opposition to a project to revitalize this iconic community. As a scientist and an ecologist who has had experience in working with urban communities acting to improve their neighborhoods through restoration of urban open spaces, I have learned much about the economic, human health, and ecological values that such open spaces provide. I offer a few brief comments based on ecological and economic science that I hope will inform your discussions. The fact that natural areas and open spaces secure environmental services and economic value to cities and towns is not in doubt in urban studies and urban ecology. The human connection to natural places is subtle. However, it manifests itself in economics that are clear and unsentimental. People are willing to pay for the advantage of being close to nature, and the benefits they receive are real. Cities like Chicago, Boston, Philadelphia, Los Angeles, Denver, and nearby Anacostia are rapidly greening their urban landscapes because it is an economic investment that pays off in both the short and long term. I have had conversations with the hard-nosed city managers and planners from some of these municipalities. I would not characterize them as tree huggers. I would say they have a vision and a hope for their communities that they can see being realized by preserving and restoring our urban open spaces, parks, and river corridors. They would recognize, as we should, that the investment we made in protecting a stand of trees that has grown and collected interest in its value for over 60 years is an economic value that should be fully considered in your decision-making. The protection of this diverse resource that symbolizes Reston, indeed, a tree is the principal feature of our community logo, is a responsibility for all of us, but most directly one in the hands of the Reston Association and its leadership. Exchanging land for development purposes would be a precedent that I believe that RA would soon regret, since the pressure to trade our open spaces for development is inevitable. What developer would not attempt to achieve some similar trade? What new pressures would there be, financial and legal, to make a deal in other situations? Returning to the science at hand, I believe the confusion and controversy regarding this decision stems largely from a gross underestimation of the environmental services and value of the Reston Association land under consideration for trade. It is noticeable that the EAC and professional foresters, ecologists, and city planners familiar with the proposal have not missed this important consideration in the calculus of redeveloping Lake Anne and favor protecting the tract. Finally, I have observed that the decision before the RA is not a simple yes and no question. There are multiple options that the developer has identified. These other options, especially number six, with fuller understanding of the values associated with the mature forested tract under consideration, would make, should be offered as viable alternatives. Finally, Rachel concludes, "I would be happy to provide technical resources and points of contact with expertise in urban ecosystems and environmental services and reevaluating the options under considerations." My contact information is below. Here are copies of the full packet, her full unabridged letter, what I said earlier today, had some typos. That's what happens when you have, are under pressure to make decisions quickly and without enough time. Mistakes. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Tammy Patrine?
Good evening, board, and thank you for your service.
Good evening, fellow residents.
I have lived in Reston 37 years. My address is 2503 Foxcroft Way. I am co-chair of Reston 2020 and have spent four years with some of you at a table planning for corridor development. To my way of thinking, this is like Henny Penny. The sky is falling, and we have to make a decision now. This gentleman referenced that no one is proposing alternative solutions. Lake Anne is the mother of Reston. It must be protected. It must be revitalized, and parking must be provided. It must not be provided at the expense of this grove of precious, rare ecology and trees. More than anywhere else, because this is our mother, we must save these trees. There are moves, the moves to revitalize are not going to dissipate if that parking lot is not put onto this RA parcel. Regarding a swap, who wants that crap, parcels that's being swapped for this valuable grove? No one. It's more expensive to maintain. It would never be developed anyway, and why should I, as an RA dues payer, want to pay extra maintenance fees to keep that up? I don't. The, absolutely, this gentleman hit the nail on the head. If the RA parcel is not available, where else would you go? And a longtime Lake Anne resident, Guy Rando, has come up with a solution that I think is very valuable, and there are ways to stage this. And basically, what I want to point out is, our concern not only is for new businesses to come in and add to the mass of merchants at Lake Anne, but we want to support existing businesses there. We have watched these businesses struggle for decades. So why would we not, why would we want to plan when we can have underground parking in the Lower Larka parking lot with entrances to the existing Washington Plaza at the Millennium Bank Building? Why would we want to have parking in back of the Crescent? Why wouldn't we want to have parking right there with adequate signage and multiple entrances? Customers to the plaza will have a better access to existing merchants as well as access to the new merchants. It's a win-win-win. I just don't see that this swap makes sense. I'm extremely agitated that this was kept secret from us when it was made, the plan for the redesign and revitalization was known in August, but none of us knew about a swap until four or five weeks ago. That's not right. So I would really say to the board, please don't give away our land. If we need to reconsider this longer, let's take the time to make an intelligent decision. We'll never get back these trees if they're cut down for a freaking parking lot. Thank you.
Irwin Fleishman?
Evening. My name is Irwin Fleishman. I reside at 1327 Buttermilk Lane, near Lake Anne. One of the principal arguments made for the exchange rests on the fiction that the LADP and RA properties are roughly equivalent in value. This is clearly not the case. To arrive at the valuation of the LADP property, the best and highest use was accorded to the entire 17-plus acres of the Crescent property. Then, the one-acre LADP property was given the proportional value. But once the LADP property is segregated and transferred, it will have lost this high value. One of the parcels has a deep ravine with a drainage ditch running through it. The other has a deep hole which serves as access to the tunnel underneath Baron Cameron. The argument that the LADP property is worth in excess of $2.3 million cannot be taken seriously. It's virtually worthless for development, and will not, and LADP will not use it. The LOI proposes to take 70% of the RA property for the construction of a parking garage. Trees on the remnant land may suffer damages to their root system, damages from the loss of the 70% of integrated tree system for water retention and loss of other benefits of a healthy, functional tree system. The trees so affected may not die immediately, but will likely lose their vitality slowly and die within 10 years. Additionally, we should not forget that the RA would retain ownership and responsibility for the maintenance of the remnants parcel with weakened and dying trees, along with the potential liability for damages caused by falling trees. The purported LOI offer of as many trees on the LADP property with a 24-inch or greater diameter as would be removed from the RA property is irrelevant. These trees exist whether the land swap takes place or not. They do not replace the trees or the loss of the mature trees on the RA property. The offer of $100,000 for canopy enhancement, conservation easements, et cetera, is also irrelevant. It will not conserve many mature trees on the RA property. Moreover, exactly what is being sought or who will make decisions is unclear from the document. The $100,000 is a small amount when compared to the total value placed on the RA property by LADP of around $2.6 million. That is, the combination of 2.1 plus the $500,000 they were willing to spend. A standalone business, as a standalone business proposition, the LOI is not a significant benefit to RA and may result in significant increase in potential liability. Some argue that the exchange must... The argument that the LADP property is worth in excess of $2.3 million cannot be taken seriously. It is virtually worthless for development and will not, and LADP will not use it. The LOI proposes to take seventy percent of the RA property for the construction of the parking garage. Trees on the remnant land may suffer damages to their root system, damages from the loss of the seventy percent of integrated tree system for water retention and loss of other benefits of a healthy, functional tree system. The trees so affected may not die immediately, but will likely lose their vitality slowly and die within ten years. Additionally, we should not forget that the RA would retain ownership and responsibility for the maintenance of the remnants parcel with weakened and dying trees, along with the potential liability for damages caused by falling trees. The purported LOI offer of as many trees on the LADP property with a twenty-four-inch or greater diameter as would be removed from the RA property is irrelevant. These trees exist whether the land swap takes place or not. They do not replace the trees or the loss of the mature trees on the RA property. The offer of $100,000 for canopy enhancement, conservation easements, et cetera, is also irrelevant. It will not conserve many mature trees on the RA property. Moreover, exactly what is being sought or who will make decisions is unclear from the document. The $100,000 is a small amount when compared to the total value placed on the RA property by LADP of around $2.6 million. That is, the combination of 2.1 plus the $500,000 they were willing to spend. A standalone business, as a standalone business proposition, the LOI is not a significant benefit to RA and may result in significant increase in potential liability. Some argue that the exchange must be viewed as an essential element for an overall successful redevelopment. The need for additional parking does not justify the acceptance of a deal that does not stand on its own as a good deal. The LADP examination of its parking strategy does not alter this. It is not a profound analysis of parking alternatives. Rather, it is a justification of the selection of the RA property as the best site for the parking garage. I have one small paragraph to connect. In conclusion, the proposed land exchange should be rejected. The LADP should request the county to grant an extension of time for its submission to allow funding, finding other parking locations, including the option of a combination of multiple sites to supply the additional parking spaces needed. Thank you.[648.16][648.16][applause]
I'm Charles Mercer. I live at 2381 Generation Drive. And like the gentleman who spoke earlier, I'm a recent newcomer to the Ruston community, but I trump him. He was only eighty. I'm eighty-three.[687.43][687.43][laughter] We chose to live here, to buy here and to live here because Ruston is a planned community and because it has successfully, in the past, developed the housing so as to preserve the natural environment, which we appreciate. We appreciate walking and biking the trails that are so numerous. I'm also a member of the Washington Plaza Baptist Church, as mentioned tonight, and as a member of the church council, I'm not speaking for the church but for myself, but we have no plans to move, folks. We are an integral part of the Lake Anne community and seek to do our part to preserve Lake Anne, so I'm excited at the prospects of revitalization of the area. In looking at the schema that was in the book here, though, it shows the elimination of the present surface parking, but am I correct that you plan underground parking in that area where the surface parking is now?
On the Crescent property or on the Lake Anne extension? This is where the Larka parking lots are?
In here.
Yeah, this is where the parking lots are now.
Yep.
Underground parking there and RA.
Because our members use the surface parking presently, and also the merchants in that area, you know, rely on that parking lot, so that there will be underground parking then available for people. I've also heard that there are plans to continue and to enlarge the farmer's market. Where will the farmer's market be?
The farmer's market will be in the new plaza when it's finished, but I think...
Sir, if you could just make the comments.
Yeah, okay. Well, those are my, and I also, with all this extensive development in housing, I hope that affordable housing is a concern of the Board because that's very, very much needed. Thank you.
Thank you so much.[836.82][836.82][applause] Susan Buffel?
Congratulations for holding out. Thank you for your attention to all of us. I am Susan Porter Buffel, 1511 Barstac Court, Ruston, about a twenty-minute walk from Lake Anne, which I do fairly regularly, and I participate in a lot of activities at Lake Anne. I do care about it. We are justly proud of Ruston, known for our commitment to natural areas, and very proud of Lake Anne because that's such a shining part of some of the things that we stand for in Ruston. Tonight, you can reject or you can extend that strategic commitment to Lake Anne. You can set a precedent for future development. I'd like to briefly look at what that value of the RA parcel is, and I'll skip occasionally because some people have touched on some of the elements. One thing they haven't mentioned particularly was viewscape. When I toured Republic's Georgetown development, it was lovely, I heard that the architect's goal was to draw people to the river, to the river view, which is comprised of trees on Roosevelt Island. What highlights the beauty of Lake Anne are the trees that frame it. Without that frame, Republic's plan to draw people to the lake view will lose much of its value. We've talked about tree canopy. We've talked a little about habitat. The RA habitat is, as we've said, unique upland forest ecosystem. Mature scarlet and white oaks are scarce in Ruston, and that's what you have there. You don't have those in, those numbers anywhere else in Ruston, as far as I'm aware. They grow slowly. They don't grow in the lowlands. The lowlands include the swap property. If these trees are cut, the animals, the plants, the ecosystem dependent on them will become extremely scarce, including a lot of the birds that many of you I know like. We also have water and air quality issues that have been mentioned. This acre of natural mature forest slows, filters, and retains the stormwater and improves the air quality in a way that no small fringe of trees on the edge is going to do. And then last, I'm going to talk about recreation for children and adults. Now, this was something that, had we had more time, we would have had more complete ideas about, but if you've ever eaten outdoors at the Plaza, you've seen the joy the kids have waiting in the fountain. We need, to draw more families into the area, which we want to do, we need more play space. The RA parcel could provide shaded play structures and interpretive trails to help our children connect with nature. With appropriate lighting and shaded benches, chessboards, what have you, this parkland could be a real draw for Rustonians of all ages rather than this disused parcel it currently is. This RA parcel provides viewscape, tree canopy, habitat, air and water quality, potential recreation, that the swap simply doesn't. The latest option isn't a solution. The largest trees are in the middle of the plot, and construction and runoff from parking will negatively impact those. Okay, one more sentence. Please, if I were an engineer, I'd tell you where to put the parking. I'm not, so please direct the engineers to find a viable parking alternative, be true to Ruston's legacy, and as elected stewards of this acre, please save the forest so that its values may enhance Lake Anne for generations. Thank you.
Justin Robertson?
I live at 2146 Whisperwood Glen Lane. I don't have a nice prepared statement, so I'm just going to give a few thoughts. I only recently became a homeowner in Ruston about a year ago. One of the main reasons I chose to buy a home in Ruston was because of the commitment to the environment and the stewardship that Ruston places on its natural areas. In my opinion, the proposed land swap would set a pretty bad precedent that development is more important than preserving our natural resources. Like many of the other people have stated, I'm sure there's an alternative solution that could be found to allow the preservation of the stand of trees in question. Boy, I don't think I'd be nervous coming up here. For my day job, I'm actually an ecologist with the Fairfax County Park Authority, and one of my key job tasks is actually identifying areas for habitat restoration and removal of invasive species. I've taken a look at both parcels in question, and to me, it's no contest. I don't know why you would ever accept that other parcel. It's heavily degraded, as everyone stated, full of invasive species, whereas the parcel that we currently own is actually in great condition and has been forested for over a hundred years. You don't get that back whenever you have to do a habitat restoration. You don't get the ecological memory, the information stored on the soils, all of the native species that were previously there. You don't just plop some trees back down and walk away and everything kind of comes back to how it was. It requires a severe, very intense commitment, a lot of time, a lot of energy, a lot of money, and I don't think that the swap would be a good idea. It would require far too much effort to restore that one parcel to be anything like the current parcel that we already own. And then, just two things I thought of just hearing all the other comments. People made a great point that a lot of these other redevelopments are removing trees off the property. That's private property that we have no say over, whereas this is a piece of property that we do own as Ruston Association, and I don't know why we'd also give that up for development whenever there's so much other development going on. And then, the gentleman with the development company stated that one of the things that would be ensured would be that the trees we would receive on the new piece of property would be of a certain size class, but as someone else astutely pointed out, the trees are already there. They're probably not going anywhere because they're right next to the road, and no one's going to develop anything there anyways, so it's not really an even trade. It's just saying, we're not going to develop here where we're going to go develop there anyways. So overall, I think this is a very bad idea. I'd like to see you guys take more time with this. I think there's probably a solution that could be found. I don't have much else to say. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.[1269.15][1269.15][applause] Kevin Munter?
My name is Kevin Monroe, and I live at 1433 Greenmont Court. I've lived in Ruston for thirty-three years and a five-minute walk from Lake Anne Village Center for twelve. I worked eleven years for Ruston Association as the Environmental Resource Specialist, two years for Audubon Society of Northern Virginia, and the last seven as the manager of Huntley Meadows Park. I'm here tonight as a private citizen, and I'm not representing any organization. We've talked a lot about the many details of this issue, all of which are critically important, but I'm most concerned about the central issue, the decision to clear protected forested parkland for a commercial parking lot. This vote could set a damaging and long-reaching precedent. I understand that many of you have promised that this is a special exception and not a precedent. However, none of us have the power to stop people in the future from seeing this as a precedent. The people that will sit in your chairs ten years from now will not follow your personal promises. They will only be interested in the votes cast and actions taken. Why then is this vote so important and this precedent so damaging? Because Ruston's parkland system is built on four hundred separate natural area parcels spread throughout the whole community. We are the only community in Northern Virginia that has this type of parkland system. My job when I worked for Audubon Society was to visit communities throughout Northern Virginia and give consultations on resource management and suburban landscapes. After twenty-four months of daily visits, I found that Ruston is the only community that has protected wooded parcels spread throughout their whole community. Others have one or two large parks in the center of town, Herndon, Vienna, Sterling. Ruston has several hundred small forest parcels spread throughout, and that's what an ecologically sustainable town is supposed to look like, wooded parkland adjoining every church, school, shopping center, and neighborhood. That's why RA has received national and international awards for their natural area parcel system. These parcels serve as reservoirs of biodiversity, wildlife habitat, air and water quality. To work, they can't just be island parks that have to be driven to. They have to be interspersed throughout the community and are adjoining schools, churches, and businesses. All of these RA forested parcels are adjoining other properties, many of which will want to expand their boundaries over the next ten to twenty years as Ruston faces endless redevelopment proposals. Right now, there are clusters, churches, and schools that have proposals to expand and clear trees. Each one will have excellent arguments on how their mission depends on expansion. The RA parkland adjoining their properties may be half the size of this parcel with no mature oaks. If you say yes to clearing an acre of mature oak forest for a commercial parking lot, how can you say no to clearing smaller parcels for much higher purposes? Every one of these adjoining properties will see tonight's vote as a precedent, even if you don't. Whatever vote you cast, please make it a thoughtful decision, and please think of the future of RA's forested parkland parcels. Have you had enough time to cast a thoughtful vote? And do you have enough info about RA's natural parcel system to understand how this vote will affect Ruston's future? Thank you.[1486.33][1486.33][applause]
That is the end of my, that is the end of the signatures. Is there anybody that we have, that has not signed in that wishes to speak? On this issue, on this matter, I know there, we have other agenda items, and we'll give those individuals an opportunity to speak at that time. Yes?
Hi, my name is Anahita Razavi, and I live in 11543 Hickory Cluster. First of all, thank you for having this discussion open to public. We really appreciate that. Many of us here really do believe in the revitalization of Lake Anne. I walked there. I go there every day. Ten years ago, in fact, when we moved here, I thought, wow, what a great place. Something is going to happen. It's going to get gentrified. Some great ideas is going to come, and it took ten years. So, everybody is excited, but for what price? What is the price? And that's my question. Are we going to be happy fifteen years from now and say, wow, there were some trees over there, and now there's a parking lot, and you know what? The parking lot is really kind of not well-maintained, and there's like gangs, you know, living in first floor, nobody's parking there. What is the price that we are paying? A parking lot for all those trees? My house faced beautiful trees. About a few years ago, this lovely lady mentioned, two acres of trees came down to build a church, beautiful church, no doubt in architecture, very, very nice. Two acres of trees came down. Every day, I think of those trees. Every single day, I remember the sound those trees made when they came down. They cried. They literally cried. Have you ever heard a sound of a tree coming down? Have you? Because that's what you're going to hear, and it's not going to be replaced. Few weeks ago, I was in Panama. We went to rainforest, and we were there to see birds and look at the trees and nature. And guess what? When I came back to my home, I see more wildlife from my windows that I saw in the rainforest. I hear more birds every day, more than I heard in Panama in rainforest. And these birds don't live right behind my house. They live all over Ruston. They don't just come and eat behind my house. They go all over Ruston. Now, I am not a tree hugger. I don't know much about trees, but I know common sense is what we need here. And as other people said, let's challenge our friend here, Republic. This is their job. They go to many, 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 many meetings like this, and we are being really, really nice and kind and polite. So, let's challenge them, and let's come up with a good solution that everybody in Ruston can say, hey, we were part of this, and we are proud of this because the RA listened to what were our concerns, and guess what? We want to see Lake Anne to succeed, and more than anybody else. I love the merchants. They are wonderful. The bookstore is doing a magnificent job. If it wasn't because of them, we would not have even a bookstore in Ruston. So, let's support them, and let's support everybody, and be sensitive, and make the right decision. And remember, trees do cry, because frankly, I heard them. Thank you.
Thank you.[1743.61][1743.61][applause] Joe?
I live at 11448 Waterview Cluster, one of the closest houses that was on the market when houses first came, on board, on the market in 1964, and I bought in 1965 as the forty-ninth buyer. My wife and I have lived in Lake Anne and been Plaza rats for all the years since then. It's the only house we've ever owned. We know almost all the merchants in Lake Anne. We spent a lot of time there. We were a tenant in Lake Anne, and yesterday... And yesterday, we had lunch in Calypso with Vicki, the proprietor of a Calypso restaurant, and I was emotionally taken by her attitudes about this plan. It just simply has to be approved. The merchants are really hurting, and they need parking right nearby. And even the main parking lot to them is a lot a long way away and a problem for getting access to their clientele. Changing the subject, I wanted to say something in support of what Bob Simon said about urban development. If you look at the things we most love in Lake Anne, Lake Anne Village Center, the Four Lakes, Town Center, and many other things, essentially, unfortunately, what had to be done in all those cases is to take down a lot of trees and, for the most part, clearcutting, not like what you're going to see Republic do. I think Republic will do a very good job like the people, the developers in Town Center did, and the finished product, an urban environment with better trees, better cared for, is superior, and we love them. Reston has more trees now, it's been said many times, than it did when Bob Simon bought the property. And we will continue to have more and more trees, and I think Republic will do a fantastic job of creating a tree landscape environment better than you see right now. So I don't see this as a loss. I see it as win-win all the way around. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I don't have that number. If you could send it to me. Is... David's gone.
He's here. He just stepped in the back.
Okay.
It's all the way in the back of the room.
Yeah. I have a... Do you want me to ask John? Is John right here? John?
I'm alone now.
Just had a quick question. Do you have an idea of what the county deadline is looking like right now for all of this?
My information is that the county is still requiring a deadline of December 10th for the entitlement applications to be submitted, which means whatever properties are included within the redevelopment, there would need to be signatures on those applications by the landowners. As far as I know, that has not changed.
Hasn't it?
And staff seem pretty adamant about that, not changing, at least from what they told me.
Thank you.
So December 10th, I believe, was the date.
Anybody else have a question for John while he's up here? I guess the only other thing I wanted to add from my perspective, I might add more, but there have been, because we had a meeting close to a month ago, we have been given an opportunity for members and other stakeholders to comment over the last three, four weeks. And we, I know many of us have received an extensive number of digital versions of comments, and so I'm curious if we tallied the number off the top of our head.
Before 5:00?
But yeah, before 5:00, the 5:00 o'clock comment time. And I just posed that question to Sabrina, so hopefully she will be able to give us a...
I can.
...an answer here, because we've been trying to separate those out for the board in different folders.
Okay. As of 5:00 today, we, all of RA staff combined, have received two neutral comments, neither opposed to nor against, 14 against the land exchange, and 29 for.
Okay. Very good.
That's not counting the comments made tonight.
Okay, but there were also, I mean, I've received more than that myself.
This is emails that I've gotten directly to staff.
Does it count the emails that we've been forwarding to each other?
No. No, this is to staff.
I mean, it's like, so they're just going to say, exactly.
Why didn't we count the emails that were sent to the board? Why didn't we count the emails that were sent to the board?
It was, as we were getting them, we were pushing them, and there were comments. I mean, that's the mass of it.
Some from Eve went.
Right. And we have a bunch that were given this evening as well.
Right. Because I got, I mean, I had 21 letters from all over Reston, actually, that were 100% affirmative, and I had three emails that were negative, vote no, and the other...
Dozens.
Yeah, it was dozens of emails that were affirmative.
So I guess my point is, we have, besides the commentary this evening, which I do appreciate everybody and their patience this evening, we have been receiving a large number of comments on a daily evening basis. And I guess my, to summarize, I think we have provided the community what I hope to achieve the last time we met, an opportunity to let us know how you feel, and I think we've achieved that. And I think it's given us an opportunity now to listen to the stakeholders, listen to the members, talk amongst ourselves, and I think we're pretty well armed in terms of how the community feels, one way or the other. So I thank you for all of that. I'm getting close to wanting to ask the question, but I'll give anybody who has an opportunity to...
President, would it be in order to seek a five-minute recess?
I second that.
Yeah.
That's fine. If you prefer that, I, you know, let's try to keep it down to five as best as possible. Our battery's dead. Eric here.
Oh, no.
We can get everybody back.
Amanda?
Mm-hmm.
A little capai sana.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
No, I don't have to. Are you sure?
Goodness. All right. Is everybody back? Yes, we do. All right. I just went through my folder just to see how many comments I've gotten over the last many weeks, and I have to say it's approaching between 90 and 100 on my end, and mostly emails with attachments or letters.
Do they just count the ones that were forwarded?
Those have been forwarded by me.
Oh, okay.
So if you all have received your own, I suspect we can ascertain that there could be many hundreds that have been received in-house. So just to give everybody an idea, and I sort of have a feeling as to how many of those comments were coming. I'll give anybody an opportunity here if you have any final questions or comments from the board before we go to a vote.
Ken, I think because I represent the Lake Anne Tall Oaks District, I would like to say a few things. Notwithstanding the heartfelt comments of those opposing the land swap, the overwhelming majority of the emails and commentary that I have received has been in favor of the land swap. The thing that is so incredibly challenging, I think, obviously, is that we have a true sustainability challenge in front of us. We are attempting to do a revitalization. We are, if we move forward, we will achieve a huge number, a huge percentage of affordable housing, and we will hopefully create a business environment that allows this community to thrive in a way that is, that provides an employment base for a group of people who will not have to deal with transportation issues because they'll be able to walk across the street to work. You know, those are incredibly valuable and worthy goals. And, you know, as difficult as the trade-off is, I think it's really clear that in trying to achieve sustainability, as John pointed out to us the first evening that he, we began one of the early presentations, the goals are often in conflict with each other. You know, that you, it's, you know, it's a triangle that you, it's a three-legged stool that we're trying really hard to get level. I feel very strongly that, and I know based on the merchants and the residents that I represent at Lake Anne, that the adjacent parking is a cornerstone for them of this revitalization. They have to get through the transition. It is hard to get through a winter on Lake Anne. Getting through construction, I think, feels very, very frightening to them. And I have certainly heard some of them say, well, you know, maybe we would be okay with just the density on the hill. Maybe we could just skip revitalizing, you know, including Lake Anne in the process, and maybe that would be enough, because their anxiety is that high about going through the process. I think that if our strategic goals, as stated on our website, as they relate to the village centers, are really something that we want to achieve, I centers, are really something that we want to achieve, I feel very strongly that this is the right thing to do. It's a difficult thing to do. It is a painful thing to do, but I feel that overall, all things in balance, I believe it is the right thing to do.
Everybody? All right, before we vote. Okay. I know, first thing I want to do is I want to thank you for coming out and articulating both sides of the issue. It really makes me feel good to be a Restonian when you've said, "Be thoughtful about this." And you've helped us become informed voters and informed decision-makers, and I want to let you know that I think we all are being very thoughtful about this. And I so wish that it was getting a chance to vote for Luke Skywalker or Darth Vader, because I guarantee you I would vote for Luke Skywalker, and it would have made everyone's life easy, but obviously decisions aren't like that in this case. We really are pitting two things that we hold dear against each other in some sense. We've got Reston viability and Reston sustainability. Our village centers, how do we keep them sustained, vibrant, community gathering places that are part of what we say are the essential Reston principles? How do we, and what we've done on the Reston Master Plan Task Force, how do we try and guide change rather than just let change happen? We're trying to guide it. And this, I must hats off to Republic and the people in the charrettes and everything for the last decade. It sounds, I was not firsthand involved with that, but I've read a lot about it now over the last couple of months, and a lot of thoughtfulness has gone into that. And the Republic's plan, as we look at it, everyone, I think, I don't want to say everyone, most people I've seen agree that in general, it's a beautiful plan, and it will revitalize the center. So we've got that on one side. And then on the other side is environmental stewardship. I mean, again, the uniqueness of Reston, right, is environmental stewardship, and as was well pointed out, this RA common property is the responsibility that you've vested in the nine of us who have to vote tonight, right? That we are thinking about that, that we are the ones who vote on that common property for all of us. And so environmental stewardship, so very important. I was with a friend who I see in the audience tonight and talking about this topic last night and how conflicted I was, and I know he leaned over me and said, "Well, he's thought of it a lot." And he said, "You know, it's a stand of trees. It's not really woods, a big woods, and you can actually see blacktop from everywhere you stand within it." And I said, "Well, that's exactly the point, right? Why can't we find a place on all that blacktop to build a garage? I just don't get it. Why couldn't we find a place on that blacktop to do that?" And that's very clear, that that needed to be thought through. Earlier in the week, I had a chance to talk to Mr. Peter about that very thing, and he asked me, "What will it take you to feel like you're making an informed decision?" And I said, "I need to see clearly a summary of the options that you looked at with your team, a team of architects, landscape architects, engineers, so that you can show me the pros and cons of those alternatives." And if I can see from that that the RA common area is the only viable place of those options that will make this work, then I guess, you know, that will be telling for me. And to be fair, thank you. The next day, I wrote a note out to the board saying, "I really wanted this," and Kate responded right away saying, "Wow, good timing. Mr. Peters just sent that on," and I saw those Tuesday or Wednesday, the 11 spots. I was thinking two or three. You gave us 11 to tell us about that you've looked at, and wrote those up. Boy, then I was even more conflicted. Yep, it looks like from the write-up that we probably have the one alternative that makes sense in the RA common property after looking at them and laying that out. And then comes the next detail of, "Okay, now, how much do I believe that? Time and money, engineering, time and money. You can do anything with time and money. That's what we learned at engineering school, right? Time and money, we can do anything." But at the same time, there's a lot of other pieces coming in, a lot of dynamics happening right now. Board Fairfax County that needs to see things by the 10th of December, different pieces going on. And I also then look at architects from our community sending me notes, along with the hundreds of other notes that people have sent to help us get informed on this decision, on both sides of it. Some architects saying, "This is the only viable place. It's a great design. You've got to do it." Other architects like Mr. Rando late sending things that say, "No, there's other alternatives." So it's not an easy decision. It brings two points that we hold dear in conflict. That said, at this time, the guiding change and making sure we're revitalizing that area is something I think we've got to manage and work on, and I think that's a guiding principle for us right now as we guide those village centers to change how we want them. So I guess I will just say thank you again to my fellow Restonians for helping crystallize and make this decision clear and help us make an informed decision. And thank you, Mr. Peter, for, when I've asked for, "What will it take me to make an informed decision?", taking the time to send the information that described, as well as you could describe it, why that the RA property is the real only viable alternative to make this go forward. And so, again, I appreciate that as well. So, thank you. Thank you, Ken, for letting me vent so I could verbalize some of my thoughts. You're welcome. Richard?
Mr. President, would you entertain a motion at this time?
I would.
Whereas for our community to remain vibrant and truly sustainable, we must provide economic opportunity and affordable housing for Reston Association members. And whereas the Reston Association Board supports the redevelopment or revitalization of Reston Association Village Centers in a manner consistent with the original vision of Robert Sidman, whereas the Reston Association Board expects redevelopment or revitalization of Reston Association Village Centers to be accomplished with minimal negative impact on surrounding open space and natural areas, and whereas revitalization and redevelopment of the Lake Ann Village is a vital aspect of our community's effort to reinvest in Reston and is one in which requires the cooperation and collaboration of all entities involved. And whereas the RA Board supports the conceptual plans proposed by Lake Ann Development Partners for the redevelopment of Lake Ann Village Center and Crescent Property, and whereas the Reston Association Board supports the planning principles as currently set forth in the draft comprehensive plan text under consideration by the Fairfax County, now therefore be it resolved. The Board authorizes the Association to enter into a non-binding letter of intent with LADP in advance of future definitive agreement, subject to approval by the Reston Association Board, to exchange 0.7 acre portion, a 0.7 acre portion of the RA parcel 6C comprising of 1 acre of undeveloped area, referenced by Fairfax County Tax Parcel 0172080006C for a minimum of 1.1 acres of suitable natural open space land within the Crescent property and the general location and configuration outlined in the letter of intent. The terms of the letter of intent are to be substantially as outlined in the revised letter of intent for proposed land exchange from LADP dated November 18, 2013. The LOI is to include the following additional terms. LADP to work closely with the Reston Association Design Review Board to ensure that the proposed parking facility achieve excellence in design that is compatible with the surrounding architecture both future and current. LADP to provide assurance that a minimum of 30% of the RA parcel will remain undisturbed. And LADP to work closely with the Reston Association staff and the DRB to ensure that the proposed parking facility further minimizes, and I want to emphasize, further minimizes adverse impacts on the environment, land, water, and air, and environmentally sensitive areas are protected to the greatest extent practical.
Your second?
Second.
How does this motion, or...
It's in your Dropbox.
It's in your Dropbox.
It's in the Dropbox. Then...
I have a question on the motion.
Yeah?
In one part, the motion discusses, suggests a 7/10 of an acre swap. Another part of the motion, it talks about 30% of the land being left on the strip. Is that...
Buffer.
How do those two work together, those two pieces?
That's the ask. Okay, in essence, what it is, is if you look at the 7/10 or 1 acre, it's 0.3 acres.
I'm with you. I guess I'm saying, if we transfer 7/10 of an acre, is it saying that 30% of that 7/10 is left on the strip? And if we're only transferring 70%, why even discuss 30%? It's not clear. If those two, it sounds like there was a change that didn't get incorporated.
The intent is to provide 7/10 of an acre out of the 1.1 for development of the garage, and 30% of the 1.1 will be left untouched, so it's actually a little greater.
I can't seem to find it in the Dropbox.
It's the alternate.
What's the alternate?
Alternate camera. I think it was a recent addition, three hours ago.
So, can I ask, Ken Chadwick, is there a different way to word the 70/30 situation?
I think what John is pointing to is that it's a question of whether it's 30% of 7, 0.7 or 30% of the 1.1.
Work.
I would entertain a friendly amendment to delete a 0.7 acre.
I'd make that, I suggest that amendment as a friendly amendment.
Why not delete the second bullet, where the minimum of 30%? Because the 0.7, that's also in the proposal that...
That's the agreement, 0.7.
The 0.7 is the thing that has to stay, I think.
Yeah, 0.7 has to stay, so the second... So delete the second bullet, yeah. LDAP to provide assurance that a minimum of 30% of the RA parcel remains undisturbed. Because we've already got the 0.3 that is ours.
I understand. I think that a case has been made, why would we want to retain the 0.3? If we convey the 1.01 with the understanding that 30% stays...
Then they maintain all of it.
Then they maintain, I mean, we don't have to worry about the 0.3, okay, maintaining it or rights or anything else. They own it, we get a commitment from them.
To your point. They are mutually exclusive.
Gotcha. I see. It's just, I think it's cleaner.
Right, so give them all of it, but they have to keep, 30% of it has to remain open and undisturbed.
Right, understood. And that will have to be contractually limited.
Okay.
Gotcha, all right.
So then, and just so that the secretary and I are clear.
You're conveying the entire piece.
So to exchange...
So to exchange an RA parcel C, to exchange...
Right, correct.
Correct.
RA parcel 6C. So we are deleting a 0.7 acre portion of those words come out.
Correct.
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 And the second bullet basically conveys what our intent was.
I'm waiting to hear the final sentence.
The final sentence for that would be, "The Board authorizes the Association to enter into a non-binding letter of intent, LOI with LADP, in advance of a future definitive agreement, subject to approval by the Reston Association Board, to exchange RA parcel 6C comprising of..."
Second.
Present.
All right, I accept that.
All right. Anybody else? Joe?
I just want to say that I'm the Board's sepphorate, but I'm not a member of the Board, so I'll not be voting.
Thank you, Joe. Appreciate that. All right, well, I'm going to, because this is a rather important one tonight, I'm going to take a roll call vote. And so when you hear your name, please signify by aye or nay or abstain, and I will... Are we moving to approve the motion as amended?
As amended.
Okay, so the first person, Amanda Endary?
Aye.
Richard Chu?
Aye.
Tim Kuhn?
No.
Ellen Graves?
Aye.
John Higgins?
Aye.
Ken Keneven?
Aye.
Michael Sanyo?
No.
Andy Siegel?
Aye.
Eve Thompson?
I'm going to abstain.
Okay. The ayes have it. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate your time and attention.
Okay.
All right.
Don't be so smug, because you're right.
Will you still be friends?
Of course we're friends.
I'm going to get a cup of coffee.
Sometimes I can buy you a beer.
Maybe.
Maybe.
I don't know, we're so friends. You know, maybe.
Folks, I'm going to call since we're going to let everybody mingle around and leave. We'll take a five-minute recess to get to the next agenda item. Thank you. Like to see everybody back here on the clock at seven minutes of.
I would entertain a friendly amendment to delete a zero-point-seven acre.
I make that, I suggest that amendment as a friendly amendment.
Why not delete the second bullet?
Yeah.
With a minimum of thirty percent? Because the point seven, that's also in the proposal that.
That's the agreement, point seven.
The point seven is the thing that has to stay, I think.
Yeah, the point seven has to stay, so those second.
So delete the second bullet, yeah. LDEP to provide assurance that a minimum of thirty percent of the RA parcel remain or stay on the strip.
The.
Because we've already got the point three that is ours.
I understand. I think that a case has been made, why would we want to retain the point three? If we convey the one-point-oh-one with the understanding that thirty percent stays.
Then they maintain all of it.
Then they maintain, then it, I mean, we don't have to worry about the point three, okay, maintaining it, or rights, or anything else. They own it, we get a commitment from them.
To your point. They are mutually exclusive.
Gotcha. I see.
Gotcha, all right. So give them all of it, but they have to keep, thirty percent of it has to remain open and understood.
Right, understood. And that will have to be contractually limited.
Okay.
Gotcha, all right.
So then, and just so that the secretary and I are clear.
You're conveying the entire piece.
So to exchange.
So to exchange a, an RA parcel, RA parcel six, to exchange.
Right, correct.
Correct.
RA parcel six C. So we are deleting a zero-point-seven acre portion of those words come out.
Correct.
Correct.
And the second bullet basically conveys what our intent was.
I'm waiting to hear the final sentence.
The final sentence for that would be, the board authorizes the association to enter into a non-binding letter of intent, LOI with LADP, in advance of a future definitive agreement subject to approval by the Reston Association Board to exchange RA parcel six C comprising of dot-dot-dot.
Second.
Present.
All right, I accept that.
All right. Anybody else? Joe?
I just want to say that I'm the board's secretary, but I'm not a member of the board, so I'll not be voting.
Thank you, Joe. Appreciate that. All right, well, I'm going to, because this is a rather important one tonight, I'm going to take a roll call vote. And so when you hear your name, please signify by aye or nay or abstain, and I will, are we moving to approve the motion as amended?
As amended.
Okay, so, the first person, Amanda Endary?
Aye.
Richard Chu?
Aye.
Tim Kuhn?
No.
Ellen Graves?
Aye.
John Higgins?
Aye.
Ken Keneven?
Aye.
Michael Sanyo?
No.
Andy Siegel?
Aye.
Eve Thompson?
I'm going to abstain.
Okay. The ayes have it. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate your time and attention.
Okay. Don't be so smug, because you're right.
We still be friends?
Of course we're friends.
Going to get a cup of coffee.
Sometimes I can buy you a beer.
Maybe. I don't know, we're so friends, you know, maybe.
Folks, I'm going to call since we're going to let everybody mingle around and leave. We'll take a five-minute recess to get to the next agenda item. Thank you. Like to see everybody back here on the clock at seven minutes of.
[inaudible]
Good evening, my name is Michael Spence, as Kate said. I'm CPA, and I'm the interim CFO. Today's my fourth day, so I know everything about these numbers, so feel free to accuse me all you want. I'll keep focused, I'll talk what, I'm going to, I'm going to tell you what I'm going to talk about so we can all focus in on where we start. I'm going to give you some choices, and I'm going to flesh those out, that's the meat of the presentation. We'll give you the summary and some conclusions, then I'll take questions, and then we'll turn it back over to the chair for board action. This starts really with page three of item E, the very, very last item is, so you all realize, is the proposed cost for new capital assets, two-hundred-ninety-two thousand nine-hundred-and-sixteen dollars. I hope you all see that.
That would be in your original packet?
Just so you know what I'm talking about.
That's okay, yeah.
Yeah.
So in the original item summary that you received?
It's the CARF item.
It's, right.
Go to your Dropbox and look for an item called, with CARF.
CARF?
C-A-R-F.
Additional items?
Is it in the additional items section?
Oh, it's under presentations.
It's under presentations folder, they were hiding it.
Got it.
No, just kidding.
So that's all we're talking about. Is everybody with me?
I finally found the form, now you can take us through it, if you wouldn't mind.
Okay. Well, I'm working with the bottom line, and with the two-hundred-ninety-two thousand, I've rounded that up to two-hundred-ninety-three thousand for purpose of this discussion. The overall budget has provided for sixteen-point-one million in revenue, thirteen-point-seven million in operating expenses, and two-point-four million to go into the R and R fund. So nowhere is it provided in that for this two-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand, so staff was tasked with coming up with alternatives of how to pay for that, and that's what I'm going to talk about with my actual presentation.
Does everybody follow that so far?
You with me? So the point is, is that the overall budget doesn't provide for funding for this.
So the way, the way, I'm sorry, so the six-thirty-four, when I looked at the spreadsheets, to me, and correct me if I'm wrong, had enough to pay for the OpEx?
Yes.
And had enough to pay for the two-point-four and the R and R?
Yes.
And it had no money set aside for getting into the new capital assets?
That's right.
So now we're figuring out, so six-thirty-four, how do we pay for those new capital assets?
That's exactly right. That's the point.
Got it?
That's why it's a thorny issue, so that's why we're here. So the top page of my section is, shows you your five choices, description, and then the effect, the economic effect of each of those choices going out into the further years. The first item is a term loan. We have a term sheet from a bank that would, and I'll come back to the summary, it's the last page, so we can talk about it again, but this is the most complicated of the different options you have. With the term loan, you would borrow two-hundred-ninety-three thousand, you would get that in proceeds in 2014, you would spend the two-hundred-ninety-three thousand on the capital assets, you would spend about eight thousand dollars in interest, and seven hundred dollars in bank fees. That's for 2014, and in 2015, you'd have eight thousand dollars in interest, and 2016, you'd start amortizing over the next five years to repay the loan. On the sec, on the next page, the line of credit is essentially the same for the first two years, the interest changes a little bit, but you pay the whole thing back in 2016. Go ahead.
How much was the loan for?
Two-hundred-ninety-three thousand.
Just for two-hundred-nin, the term loan was for just two-hundred-ninety-three?
Yeah.
Okay. Got it, thanks.
Option three is if we were to borrow from the R and R fund, and if you did that, there would be no loan proceeds, you'd spend the two-hundred-ninety-three thousand, there wouldn't be any interest expense, because it's your own money, but the last is the tricky part, and that is you would have an opportunity cost, because you would no longer have the two-hundred-ninety-three thousand sitting in your R and R fund earning interest. So the question became, well, how much interest is foregone by spending that money now and not investing it for the future? And it turns out, that's a very small amount, it's only two-hundred-fifty dollars on two-hundred-ninety-three thousand. And the way I got that is, your CDs that we just recently purchased are only yielding point one percent, so it's not a big cost to borrow from the R and R fund. Items four and five are pretty straightforward, although four looks a little confusing. It's just a fifty-fifty mix between taking a bank loan and borrowing from yourself, and we could make any kind of iteration there you want, decide if some other mix, but that's just for illustrative purposes. And point, the fifth one is, instead of borrowing from the R and R fund, what if we reduced the two-point-four million that we're planning on putting in the R and R fund down to two-point-one-five million? That has different mechanics legally within the funds, but the essential economic impact is exactly the same as the third option, which is borrowing. So you need to decide as a board what you want to do and language regarding that, but cash is fungible, either one, three, and five are pretty much the same thing, so when you talk about, do we want to borrow, or do we want to short the two-point-four for purpose of this discussion, they're the same choice. So, in summary, option one pushes out the expense the longest, option two, the hit is in 2016, and option three, you're out the cash right at the front end to pay for these. You would spend about $8,000 in interest and $700 in bank fees. That's for 2014. And in 2015, you'd have $8,000 in interest. In 2016, you'd start amortizing over the next five years to repay the loan. On the sec, on the next page, the line of credit is essentially the same for the first two years. The interest changes a little bit, but you pay the whole thing back in 2016. Go ahead.
How much was the loan for?
$293,000.
Just for 290, the term loan was for just 293?
Yeah.
Okay, got it, thanks.
Option three is if we were to borrow from the R and R fund. And if you did that, there would be no loan proceeds. You'd spend the $293,000. There wouldn't be any interest expense, because it's your own money. But the last is, is the tricky part, and that is you would have an opportunity cost, because you would no longer have the $293,000 sitting in your R and R fund earning interest. So the question became, well, how much interest is foregone by spending that money now and not investing it for the future? And it's, it turns out that's a very small amount. It's only $250 on $293,000. And the way I got that is your CDs that we just recently purchased are only yielding 0.1%. So it's not a big cost to, to borrow from the R and R fund. Items four and five are pretty straightforward, although four looks a little confusing. It's just a 50-50 mix between taking a bank loan and borrowing from yourself, and we could make any kind of iteration there you want, decide if some other mix, but that's just for illustrative purposes. And point, the fifth one is, instead of borrowing from the R and R fund, what if we reduced the 2.4 million that we're planning on putting in the R and R fund down to 2.15 million? That has different mechanics legally within the funds, but the essential economic impact is exactly the same as, as the third option, which is borrowing. So you need to decide as a board what you want to do in language regarding that, but cash is fungible. Either one, three and five are pretty much the same thing. So when you talk about, do we want to borrow, or do we want to short the 2.4 for purpose of this, this discussion, they're, they're the same choice. So, in summary, option one pushes out the expense the longest. Option two, the hit is in 2016. And option three, you're out the cash right at the front end to pay for these. Now, this whole discussion is talking about RA as a whole, with no, with all, with the three funds, or two funds as they're working right now, lumped together. If you choose option three, the enter, the, the R and R fund will obviously have money coming in from the operating fund to pay for any loans. If you transfer it, that would be a different issue, but those are the two. That, that, that is, that's the point that I want to make sure you understand, is this is showing the association as a whole, not one of the funds, okay? Are there questions?
I need you to go over that again.
This is showing the entity as a whole, if it takes a course of action, as opposed to just, what would the R and R fund look if we did number three? Or what would the operating fund look if we did number three? If you think back to your, your financial statements that the auditors put out, they show you those funds. So if you, what I'm talking about is if you were looking at that, you're looking at the last column, the whole group, as opposed to, well, I want to know what's going to happen to the R and R fund if I do this. The R and R fund, if you treat it as a loan, is actually going to make more money than the 250 presumably, because you'll say to the R and R fund as an operating fund, we will pay you more than 0.1% if you lend us that money to spend now as an operating fund. We'll pay you some other rate, better than you can get at the bank. So at the end of the two-year period, let's say you say, we're going to pay you 5% instead of 0.1. You're going to have $16,000 or $20,000 more in interest income in the R and R fund. At the same token, you're going to have $20,000 of expense in the operating fund. That's all. So RA looks exactly the same, but the, but the R and R fund looks a lot healthier. Like, it made a lot more money than, than if it had just left the money in the bank and earned 0.1%.
When we wrote the resolution, we did leave open to say the CEO has, at her discretion, to recommend funding the R and R fund less than the amount, 1/10th looking over the next 10 years, and as we've been recommended by the fiscal committee, as long as she said how she would make up that amount going forward. Is part of that, by the loan being, I'm going to rob 300 grand from it now, and my plan for paying it back over, in getting that 300,000 back into that fund over the next five or six years? Is there a plan to do that? I think that was the intent, as I read and wrote that.
If I want to show that spreadsheet, I think that's in the PowerPoint. I mean, that was the intent for that.
This spread, this, this, this doesn't, if I follow your question, this doesn't say, hey, where are we getting the money as an entity to pay back the $293,000? If you borrow money from a bank, okay, and spend it on these fixed assets, this doesn't say, here's where you will get the money to pay back the bank as an entity. So if that's your question, right, it doesn't, go ahead.
Again, my question is, as we wrote the fiscal resolution long before your time, I think our intent was that we would allow the CEO to say, I, I am going to fund the R and R fund less than the 2.4 million that's recommended based upon the formula. And in this case, about $300,000 less. If you're going to call it a loan, in my sense, that would be, or however you want to do it, that part of that resolution then talked about, okay, so you, you shorted the fund 300K in 2014. When will you overage the account in 2015 through 2020 at a $300,000 level so that we are now equal, or time value of money, or whatever we want to say, the right amount, so that it's there? Maybe it's there?
It's, it's similar to...
Oh, let's, I think John's got a...
Tim, or John, go ahead.
I caused, I caused the trouble, so let me see if I can untangle. I, I was attempting at one meeting to simplify this, and I used the word loan. And I thought maybe I had cleared that up, but I didn't. It's not normal, and it's probably not even proper, for one fund to lend money to another fund. So that was kind of a shorthand to say, we have the money over here, but we want it over here. Let's take it out. We'll, we'll put more in later. That was kind of the informal concept of a loan. I'd like to wipe that out of the discussion and say, the option is to take advantage of that section of the resolution that said, we'll refund less this year, free up money to put into this other fund.
Yep.
Or also take advantage of the other thing that we observed from fiscal, that there was probably some excess funds in the R and R. At one point, we thought it might be $2 million or a half. We didn't know what the number was, but we know there's something beyond what we needed. So, a proposal that I will be making in a few minutes is that we transfer 200, and pick the number here, $293,000 from the R and R to this new fund. Keep the R and R funding on the, on the same glide path that we laid out. Let's not interrupt that. And if the next time we review it, which we have to do annually anyhow, it turns out in the, that in the future, this 293 needs to be made up, then the CEO has to figure out how to make it up. If it's not, if it doesn't need to be made up, then we're okay. So the simplest, I think, approach, and again, I apologize for confusing it with the, the term loan, but the simplest approach is to recognize that we have plenty of liquidity. That's kind of, I love that fancy word. We got the cash. We have the fund balance. And we won't do any harm by temporarily putting $300,000 into new assets. A lot smarter, I think, when we're earning 1% than borrowing at 4%, 5%.
John, is there, is there a certain amount that we're required by law to have any R and R?
The amount, that's a very good question. Oh, thank you. What, what counsel will tell us is that the, the law says that we have to decide that the amount in the reserve is sufficient. Is it sufficient or adequate? Adequate to meet the needs that we've identified for the future, the reserve needs.
For a certain period of time.
You know, that's way up here. So no, there's no formula, there's no number.
Okay, there's no formula?
We're well within the, what I believe is the fair limit of the law on that, but counsel...
No, you're absolutely right.
And, and the fiscal resolution we wrote and adopted last year talks about, you know, minimum balance that we're shooting for, that, you know...
Not to go below 2.5.
Go below $2.5 million, which we don't. I guess what, you know, the logical thing that we would look at right now is our 10-year forecast of expenses and, and for repair and replacement, and the money going in. And, you know, we looked at that and did we say, hey, some years we put in more than we take out, like next year, and some years we take out more than we put in by doing this formula. And we never want that balance to go down below 2.5 million, because we've said that's what we want as our buffer for emergencies and contingencies. And it also happens to be the amount that we're talking about in our investment fiscal resolution number six, you know, for long-term investments, so that, that we won't actually need to touch that in any short period of time. So, again, by taking this 300, John, have we taken that spreadsheet for the 10 years? And does it project out that we are dipping below 2.5?
I haven't, I haven't attempted, in part because, you know, that spreadsheet is a moving target.
Right, not exact same.
By buying another $300,000 of capital assets, we're buying for ourselves the need to put in additional reserves. And I don't know how much, because I don't know the life of these assets. I suspect it may be, you know, $50,000 a year more. The other thing is the, the, if we took the path that said, we'll underfund R and R, first of all, I don't, I don't like the feel of that in the very first year out the gate, coming in less. And the second part is really asking the CEO to make a commitment to something that, that basket of eggs that we know are barely warm, much less saturated. We're going to, this will be paid for by all of our new membership, but they're not here yet.
Right.
So, right, but yeah, thank you.
Why they're not here?
I think Tim's been waiting.
Tim?
Thank you. Is there any downside to borrowing the money essentially from the R and R fund rather than going to a bank? I mean, it seems like we pay less. We don't create any less liability, because the loan would have to be paid back. So is there any reason to borrow money?
In this particular circumstance, because you have so much liquidity, the answer is no.
So this is easy, then? I mean, it's a simple recommendation.
Sure, I made it worse than it probably needed to be.
I'd like to suggest, though, that it is a, being able to, having access to borrowed funds is a great tool. I think that what we are missing, though, is understanding that we have any earning capabilities on our money. I mean, because it's, you know, if, if we were earning money, then you could link that to debt service. And, but, I mean, like, right now, we just aren't earning enough cash on our, our investments aren't strong enough. So if we were, if we knew that we were earning interest income...
If rent's negative, then clearly you're better off borrowing money and leveraging, but we can't probably go there.
No, but I'm, I'm just saying that, you know, next year, right, if we have a better investment income, then I think that it is good to have the ability to borrow money as a tool. That's all. I mean, it's, it's just part of the bag of tricks.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to line of credit, but I don't, you shouldn't use it, is what I'm hearing you say.
In this, well, right now, but she, her point is well taken. And furthermore, her point would be probably even further to say that term may be even better than line of credit.
I think term would be better.
Yeah, because assets last longer. Let's have the debt last longer. But it's really a discussion for later.
Right, so if we wanted to buy the, that property over in...
Did you say something? Yeah, I didn't know what you mean.
Whatever, whatever. We want to buy land. Then it would be great to be able to get a term loan, and if we knew that we had, if we could manage the debt service by interest in earnings, then that would be awesome.
And to your point, the only reason I, you're right, it's, it's not much money now. And that's why I put the 250 up there, so you could see, you know? If I left it blank, you'd be, well, how much are you talking about? We're losing, well, we're not losing much at all. It's, you got a lot of money, you're allowed to move it. It's a no-brainer. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Like most accountants, I love public speaking. Well done on your fourth day. Well done.
Can't wait till next week.
Eddie? I mean, so one through five on there, not shown six, which says, either don't do or postpone the new capital items. Or seven, find a place where you radically prioritize and find $300,000 if that's what you want to do versus some other things. So I'd like to hear some more about that before I have to vote on that.
Six and seven were really bad ideas. We didn't put them down. Didn't, didn't occur to us to say, let's not do it. The purpose of the presentation was, was to say, we think we can do this. It just didn't occur to us.
No, no, perfectly fine. So I guess I'm asking now, could we post, since we, the big deal is we have 800 grand that we got to spend this year on R and R fund that we didn't spend last year to get to our formula to do that, and that was a big hit. So that's the thing that's hurting our budget right now, and the fact that we've got a lot more money that we have to put into the R and R fund this coming year than we did in the past years. So, one option would be, we're not going to do any new capital projects next year. We're going to postpone them to the next year when we kind of have a chance to catch up. So that's something I...
And that would enable on the motion, that's all.
Okay, and the other option would be to say, are there areas we could prioritize to cut close to that money, or some part of that money, where we spend the money on the capital, the new capital projects versus something we do today? And I'd like to hear a little bit more about what the possibilities are for that, or if you're just saying there are no possibilities for that this year.
At the last meeting, I presented what I would consider my final budget to this board of directors, and I'm leaving it to the board at this point to determine how they want to move forward with that. I felt that everything in the operating and in the reserve was needed. And we had gone through a third iteration of cuts and had honed it as, as much as we could. I also laid on the table and took the opportunity to explain the importance of the items that are in the new capital asset acquisition budget. And we spent quite a bit of time talking about that, and we came to the conclusion with the budget that you have before you. As you, as you noted, the new capital items were not funded. It was just the regular and the, or the operating and the existing. So I left it at that point up to the board to decide, and I wanted to do my due diligence and bring back the five options that I thought I had heard. Yes, sir.
Please.
And number eight, Andy, while, I mean, thank you for raising that. There were things that just didn't make it to paper because we just didn't think that was a good idea. Number eight was, we could ask for an additional $11 assessments to pay for new capitals for spending. And that would have been a really bad idea. But, so that's why it's not on here.
I agree, it would have been a really bad idea.
The beauty, I think, of this from where I, from my perspective, is that some of the new capital spending, and this is my personal view, is important that it be put in front of us, but it would be unwise to actually spend it quickly. Some, some of that new spending needs to be looked at a lot closer before any checks are written. And this enables the CEO to spend the money once that determination is made, but without doing any damage if the determination is made to not spend it. There hasn't been any assessment, there hasn't been any loan commitment. It's kind of neutral if we do nothing. So that's why it was pretty attractive to me.
I do think the projects, especially as we are incubating eggs, become more and more critical, you know, the, the document management and the, the... I just don't see how, as this, as the membership grows, how we can do without modern technology to support it.
Yeah, I think we've been through the process. We've had about six months of discussions of what we need new. We've gone through staff prioritizations, membership prioritizations, our own prioritizations. Then we reprioritize those prioritizations. So I think staff has done a very good job of whittling down the additional capital expenditures pretty well. I think we're at a place where we're, as of last board, the last board meeting, we have a good agreement on where we stood from an operating standpoint. That portion of motion, I think, we can get to. I think the point now is, staff has basically said, your prioritizations are prioritizations. We went on a field trip seeing the issues at hand. I'm basically going to say, in my own opinion, if we delay another year on getting a good customer relationship management environment in place here, I think we're going to be in sorry shape, especially as we have to plan for additional residents, program enhancements.
Yeah.
So I think what my, my position would be, as I asked last time, put you, what I consider to be the most important stuff, put the most important things you think need to be done in front of us. That's been done. To ask them to go back and say, what do you think now? What can you do now? I think we've given them enough times to give us enough gyrations. It's up to us now, as Kate said, to determine, do you want a customer relationship system in here sooner than later? Do you want to handle some of the staffing issues that we have to handle, or not? That's a yay or a nay. It's as simple as that. But I think we've put the staff through enough gyrations over since last March to get to this point. And we do have a budget due date here soon. We have to get out the door before, unless you want some more special meetings.
But isn't, that's almost two separate things. We're talking about an assessment that's paying for the R and R and the operating fund, which we've talked about already, and now a separate motion that's talking about moving 300 grand from an R and R fund that we're saying has an overage into the CARF fund to allow spending on the CRM, the HR actions, the HR action software, the Hunter's Woods pathway lighting, and the expanded garden plot at Cedar Ridge. So, so there are two separate motions to talk about that.
There are actually three. There are actually three. So you vote yea or nay?
Counsel is reminding me that we do have a public hearing section on this as well.
I understand. Yes, yeah. And I want to get to that point. So we're at a point... We can continue the dialogue, but we did open... As per the published agenda, we do have time for a public hearing on the budget. And I do have an individual who... I have at least one signature. So do we have any more questions or discussion? All right, then I will... Let's see. Person that signed up for the member comment period on the 2014-2015 budget is Mr. Andrew Ivovich.
Andrew Ivovich, 1556 North Gate Square, number 12. Apologize for my scratchy voice today. I think that the staff has done a great job putting together iteration and iteration, multiple gyrations, refining and finding out, you know, where exactly we stand based on the board's direction for... I know we all hate the word, you know, "Keep the lights on, proceed as is," kind of a budget with a few changes here and there. And the, you know, three or four iterations that have come out have all been informative, interesting, great, and well-done. And so, you know, good job to the staff for, you know, accomplishing that. And I think what I just learned here about the... Another option for, you know, attacking the capital expenses has been really well put together, explained great. Thank you for that. And I also don't want to forget, though, that when we have this high priority list, we have both 2014, but we also have 2015, too, which is even greater than the $293,000. That's an additional $386,000. Are you going to make the same move next year? It seems a little short-sighted to not mention that now. You know, what's going to be the story next year? Are we going to have the funds to do it? Are we going to not spend the whole 293 this time and still have, you know, time to, you know, rethink a few things? So I think that got left out there. But my biggest concern, though, is we spent a lot of time talking about the R and R fund. We spent a lot of time talking about the capital expense list. But when it comes to... That's about 15% to 20% of your overall budget. And if so many member comments... This is what I talked about the first time that I spoke to you guys this year, was that so many member comments about lowering your fees, yet 80% of your budget is about your main operating expenses, and you didn't even think about getting creative there. You really didn't. You talked about a few things. People came up here and they talked about, you know, renovating the main service facility, you know, getting some extra funds there. You know, Larry comes up here and multiple times, I've heard him say, "We have too many facilities." You know, what about a mention of, you know, closing down a pool or lowering the hours? What does that do? You know, those kinds of comments need to come from the board. You didn't direct the staff to go look at those kinds of things. So why would they? Those are the kinds of, you know, creative thinking that you didn't do. But that's where 80% of my fee comes from each year. And it's great that we're working on these capital expenses, and it's great that we're working on the R and R fund, that we're funding it to a level that is needed to preserve the facilities at Reston, which has been a huge push of all the board members here that we need to do. And I'm glad we've done that. But in order to attack the fees that, you know, cause a lot of pain on some of the people that live in Reston, you need to hit this 80% of our budget that we're not looking at hard enough. And that's really saddening to me that, you know, here we are towards the end where you have to make a decision, and, you know, we're talking about $14 or $18 for capital expenses. I paid $590 this year, and that's huge compared to these other numbers. When it comes down to a per-unit, per-year basis, the $14 million budget of just normal everyday expenses needs to be looked at by the board, not by the staff to just... What they did was what you asked them to do, which is to keep the lights on, do what we keep doing. What are we going to do different to fund this organization, this community, in a different way that makes sense? It's a lot to do in one year, but we didn't even take a couple steps. We had a couple things mentioned every once in a while, but, you know, we keep coming back to these other things that we need to work on. But that's only 20%. Where's the bigger discussion on the longer, more interesting things that are going to really help solve our funding problem and, you know, lower this fee over time? You know, we need to start having those conversations. I know Kate's already thinking about, you know, different funding formulas, which is definitely one of the options. You know, where's the option to have the pool pass be $300 instead of $25? Huge difference. I know you've been there in the past. Maybe it's time to be there again. I wasn't here for it. I don't know what it's like. I didn't go in the pool once this year. I walk past it all the time. I think they look great. I'm glad we have them. But if I want to use it, maybe I need to pay more for it, and I'd like to see my other fee lowered. You know, these are the kind of discussions that maybe our communications team needs to be presenting to the board, you know, to the members, that, "Hey, these are some other options. What do you think about them?" How many member comment discussions I know over my three minutes, but bear with me. I sat through all that other stuff. All right? And a lot of other nights, I sat through a lot of other stuff, too. So bear with me. You know, we had... You set out an agenda for the year of holding lots of member meetings with plenty of advance notice, but I'm the only person here, week after week after week, you know, wading through things to talk to you for a few minutes. You know, where's the working meetings? Where's the really work to tackle this 80% that we're just doing the same thing year after year? And it's not going to work out for me. And I recently refinanced my mortgage for a 501R because I don't think I'm going to live here for another five years based on the way this has gone. And that's kind of sad. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. That was the only person that has signed up for this evening. Is anybody in the audience that wanted to take a moment, provide a comment as we get into the final throes of the budget discussion?
Point of personal privilege.
Please, sir.
Mr. Ivovich, when did you move to Reston?
2011.
And you're talking about leaving within five years? Okay. So I'm just curious as to how you think that you're speaking for most Reston Association members. I wonder why you believe that we struggled with the budget process? If you mean that we put a lot of time and effort into it and we made hard decisions in the process, yeah, I guess you could say we struggled. But I think that, you know... I don't understand what you're talking about when you say that the public hearings, there was not sufficient notice. We have counsel right here that makes sure that we dot our i's, cross our t's, and do things according to regulations. If you're talking about... You mentioned that our schedule was not followed. Let me assure you that the schedule in the first place is a target. It's a roadmap. We do things off schedule and we do things on schedule. All right? But we followed the original schedule pretty closely. Okay? You accuse us of being all talk and no action. I probably want to rethink that. You know, there are only a few comments. You know, you mentioned that we're not getting any comments from members. It has been a struggle, and truly a struggle, of this board and previous boards to get anybody to pay attention other than to complain. Okay? And periodically, we get complaints. Up until recently and when a wonderful woman passed away, she was the only member who came to our board members... Board meetings and participated in budget discussions. There's no sense for us to have a workshop with you. If you brought 50 people, then maybe we should have a workshop. But not... We're not going to have a workshop with one person. And I really resent your fact that you're saying that we're unable to make hard decisions. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Okay.
I have a question to Kate.
Yes, you may.
Yeah, Kate, if they have the Fairfax County tax reduction rate, when does that do? Because I know it is because sometimes... I know when David was here, he said, "We had to wait until we find out from Fairfax County." We have to have ours. So I was wondering, when do these people have to pay the $285?
We do have a list of people that we regularly get that tax from. So we're kind of on a watch for them so that they would pay the normal fee by the... Due date is January the 1st. We don't start assessing late fees until March the 1st. So it would behoove anybody who's on that to pay by March the 1st.
The $285?
Correct, correct. And our staff, our finance team, you know, has a laundry list of those houses, and it's a fairly regular group of people, so we know what to look for.
Yeah, so if someone was on it last year, they'll pay the $285 this year. They won't have to pay the $634.
If they still own that property, that's...
Right, that's what means. Because that's what, you know, he told me that they had to wait, so that's why I wanted to make sure that...
The only weight, I think, that he indicated, too, has to do with receiving... Those individuals receive a letter around the July timeframe from the county or between then and July, so they just need to get it to us by a certain time so we can validate that.
I just wanted to make sure they weren't paying the higher assessment if they didn't know it.
Right, it depends on what you decide. As counsel indicated, there's a... If you choose to make it $285, that's if the board chooses to do that, that would be the amount.
Right, well, whatever the amount is. But, you know, I mean, there's nothing in here that they could pay an installment, you know, in the thing.
We can always make a special plan for any member. They can work with our finance team to work out a plan. It doesn't have to match exactly what's listed here. All they have to do is contact us ahead of time so that we can make sure that they don't go... They don't end up through our adjudication process.
Okay, well, that's good. Thank you.
Right.
Because those people that are on county relief, tax reduction rate, they're the people that have the hardest point in most cases of paying the assessment.
Okay. Anybody else? And if I may, I'll read the motions. I'll start with board motion number one. Move to approve the proposed operating repair and replacement and new capital asset budgets for fiscal years 2014 and 2015, thereby setting the planned revenues, fees, operating expenses, and capital expenditures for each year as follows. Revenues for fiscal year 2014, $16,156,368. FY 2015, $16,571,879. Operating expenses for fiscal year 2014, $13,713,369. For FY 2015, $14,156,879. Capital expenditures on existing capital assets for fiscal year 2014, $1,666,679. For fiscal year 2015, $2,539,144. For new capital asset acquisitions, $292,916 for fiscal year 2015, $386,500. Do I hear a second, please?
Second.
That's a second.
Comments or questions? And I'll ask the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is anybody opposed? Is anybody... One opposed? Is anybody abstaining?
Wait a minute. I'd say ten vote.
No. I'm sorry?
Andy was...
Andy, that's the problem.
Are we clear?
So it's eight to one?
I was asking who the abstention was. I mean, negative.
You were in the nay boat, not in the...
Yes.
That's correct, Joe.
Right, okay.
That's correct. A as well, I think.
So Tim is also nay.
Are we clear? Thank you. Board motion number two. Move to direct staff to fund the proposed 2014 new capital asset expenditures through an inter-fund transfer from the Association Repair, Replacement, and Reserve Fund as proposed by staff in new CapEx option three attached here, too. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Eve, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is anybody opposed? Is anybody abstaining? We have one, nay.
Andy's nay.
I was the nay, Joe.
Okay. Everyone else is yea? Okay. Thank you. It's bad when you read the roll call because we have no problem knowing how everyone votes.
No problem. We'll get you there. Board motion three. Move to approve amendments to Exhibit A of Assessment and Finance Resolution II: Assessment Rates and Collection Procedures to Reflect the Proposed Base $634 Annual Assessment Rates, Installment Plan Fees, Collection Fees, and Respective Due Dates for 2014. Do I hear a second?
Second.
John, second.
Any questions or comments on this motion? Richard?
I'd like to make an amendment or propose an amendment to the 2014 annual assessment rates, line item five, the Fairfax County tax reductions. I'd like to see that raised to $412.
So that's actually line item four?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
I thought I heard you say five.
No, I'm sorry. Four, yes.
To...
Raise the per lot, per unit fee to $412.
What is it now? Or what was it?
It's $260 right now.
So it's... So we need... Any comments? I just need to make clarification. So it's $260 now. The current motion shows it going to $285, and Richard wants it?
My amendment is to take it to $412.
And this is for the people who have the...
They're on tax relief as designated by Fairfax County.
So we're increasing the amount they pay from $260 to $412 or something like that.
That seems like a significant increase.
It is.
Well, it's... If it's an amendment or if it's looked to be a friendly amendment, some move around the second, need to accept it. Otherwise, you need to get a second for the amendment.
Right.
And otherwise, it would fail.
Ken, do you accept the amendment?
I accept the amendment.
John, do you accept the...
Does that change the $634 number?
No.
No.
Raise the people who have the most trouble.
It's not quite as unfriendly as I thought, and I accept it.
Wait, what was your last question? Does it change the what?
Does it change the assessment?
No, but it does... Changes the burden on a group of people who are, yeah, known to not be able to...
That's going to bring in some more revenue.
Theoretically, it could lower the $634 if you're... But you have to figure out what the math is there. Did you figure that out, Richard?
People who are already on tax relief, though.
I'm not proposing a change to the basic fee structure.
So how much more revenue does that bring in? $285 to $410 times the number of households that'll do that?
Better on it.
Okay. How much revenue does that extra bring in?
$880. Is that... Do I remember?
$800 for the total...
$227 per member, right?
So it's a hundred and... Something like 155.
Goes from $285 to $412? Budget number?
If we don't know it, I guess it's time to get out of the category.
$150,000 bucks, it looks like.
$127 times 800.
So it's $412 minus $285 is $127. Times how many units?
800.
800.
Times 800 units?
It's about $100.
Hundred grand. So we want to... This change would make a hundred grand.
Can I just ask, what's the basis for that number? I mean, it's such a... It feels kind of disproportionately high because, I mean, we're taking the members up N percent and we're doubling...
It's a 35% discount.
Well, that's one way to look at it. The other way to look at it, if you were previously paying to something, is that it is a hundred percent increase.
You ask the justification, it represents a thirty-five percent discount.
So, you're suggesting 10 percent less than what is normally, normally a forty?
Is there...
Normally, it's a forty-five percent.
Forty-five, yeah.
So, it's 10 percent difference.
Richard, is there a way to ramp this over a number of years, or you want to do it in one fell swoop, is per your, per your amendment?
We're only setting the 2014, right? We're not setting 2015.
Correct, just 2014.
Right. Well, I guess my question is, do you want to take this in incremental steps, or you're seeming to go up all in the, in the year we're voting?
Are you asking me if I was sitting here in 20, we were talking about 2015, would I be suggesting that there be a 30 percent increase, I mean, discount?
No, I'm asking if you would consider making it a smaller amount in 2014, and then making another step in 2015.
Right.
Sorry, I missed?
Can I, gradually going up, rather than doing...
That's my question, and you're, that's not the question.
Amanda?
Can I ask again the question, what's your rationale? I mean, what's the basis of why such an increase? Do we have data on the folks who are getting tax relief that suggests that they don't need that type of relief?
I don't think we have that at all.
Okay.
Okay, I think that one of the things that we know that is on the table, okay, is we are struggling to find, to reduce expenses or find additional revenue. This is one way to find additional revenue, okay? And it's simply a question of whether this board is willing to take it here, or, and or find it somewhere to where, place, or reduce something. I mean, we're basically having to take, we're reducing the amount of money that we have to spend by a substantial sum. If I'm only, if I'm talking about recouping $100,000, okay? So, I think this is an area where it's, is impacting people that are having a problem, okay, or who need them, I don't mean, I didn't mean having a problem. It's impacting people that are, that perhaps need the reduction. We've had discussions over the years as to, we struggle with what percentage of the 800 truly need the reduction versus something else.
And I'm not saying that that's not valid, I'm saying that I don't think we have enough data as a board to make that decision with such a drastic increase.
I guess, I guess the question would be, what additional data would you want?
Aye.
I mean, to help you in evaluating it.
Well, I would want to know, as we've talked about before, but I don't have it right in front of me, what income levels are we talking about, and like, like, of the percent, of the 800, what are the percentage in those different income levels?
Yeah, I'd like to see a distribution across...
Did we get that?
No, no, as we indicated before, the county doesn't tell us that. The only thing that we get is a letter from the county indicating that that particular owner of the property is on tax relief.
Right, we get no personal information.
Can we have a reminder again, for the edification of everyone on the board, what the tax relief stipulations are?
How do you get on tax relief?
She's looking at you, sir.
Well, the base...
It's tax relief for the county. Johnson, give us that question.
The tax relief, county tax relief program is an income-based, income and disability-based. We have, and it, so the amount of relief is not based on the, solely on the value of the property, it's not based solely on the income of the individual, it's a formula approach. We don't have such approach. So, that was the observation someone had made several months ago, that while a person might get a very small relief from the county, if they get anything at all, they get the entire relief from the rest of the association. We thought that was kind of out of balance. The trouble is, we don't know how to get it back into balance.
But I think that the way you get it into balance is you, you implement a program that says, we have a tiered program, we get to see what the county's tiered program is without knowing about individuals, and you replicate that, and you say, okay, we will, if you are getting a small amount, then we're going to give you a small amount. We do that by taking in the same kind of data. You apply for tax, you apply for relief from RA. I don't think that you can just say, we're going to increase that much, when, I mean, you don't know what the burden is that people are dealing with. I mean, that's...
That might, that might be a very solid approach for us to take, I'm not sure I want to do it, but we might have people apply for relief. Here's the RA assessment.
You have to have the county letter.
And if you want, you have to have a county example reduction.
So, you have to have that, and then they come, and they, they apply for relief from us as well.
And, and we would then have to lay out the criteria that we would want to...
Copy the county's criteria.
Lot more complicated than, but it might be worth it.
And Kate, or could probably help us here, but I believe that taking the county information was an administrative shortcut, okay? As, rather than having to go through the gyrations of taking in the applications, processing the applications, making decisions, the easiest way to deal with it was, here's a list of people from the county, we're just going to give them relief.
Oh, I'm saying...
In part, but I would suggest...
It's, you know, upload it to a spreadsheet.
Yeah, I, I would like to...
Kate?
Go ahead.
I, with all due respect, I would not make the change. I would leave it as $285. I think that the issue definitely merits more review, and we need to get back to you. I need to work with staff to come up with a logical solution, do the work, do the data on that, allow me to do that during the course of 2014, and we add that to the to-do list, because it's worth doing. And I could, and in all candor, the first few months this guy was with us, he asked that question, where'd you come up with this? And the question's never been answered, and I want to take the time to do it the right way. I, I don't, you know, I, I think it's, it's a fair question to ask.
Very patient.
He's very patient, man.
Apparently.
And I want to, and I want to do it the right way, because it has to do with, you know, assessment collections, and he's never seen any of the language that we have before, such as this is may, it doesn't says shall, or anything like that. Where'd you come up with the formula? And it is a question that needs to be answered. So, instead of throwing a dart at the board tonight, I would leave it as is and then come back.
You know, I sympathize with the idea of exploring revenue and expense opportunities, but I think we need to be thoughtful about it, and as a matter of fact, I'd like to see a prioritization. You know, you've just come into this position, it would be good to see over a period of time, a list of what these opportunities are, and what the challenges are in terms of execution. This may be relatively easy to do, I think politically, there's going to be lots of issues, there may be other things that we can execute more efficiently, effectively, that reap greater benefits back to the community.
And resources are a definite high point on my list to hit, so that's a task that I, that I need to work on.
Richard?
I will withdraw the friendly amendment.
Any...
Too many unfriendly comments. Do you guys agree with that?
Yes, I agree with that. John, do you agree with this? All right. So, we're back to the original motion. Any comments, any final comments? Otherwise, I'm going to ask the question. All right, thank you for the discussion. All those in favor of the original motion, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is anybody opposed? Is anybody abstaining? Thank you. Right. Where are we on the agenda now? Item H.
I'm sorry.
General member comments?
That vote was unanimous, right?
It looks like it was.
Okay, good.
We do have an item here for general member comments. Is there anybody in the audience here for general member comments? Because nobody signed up for it. Are you sure? Going once? All right.
Yes.
Would anybody on the board care to have any comments at this point in time? Andy?
I have no comment at this time.
All right. Joe?
Well, I have some comments, I have two comments. First, no, I was very unhappy to hear about Arlene Whitaker passing away, because she did an outstanding job, and I don't, I mean, had a very successful expo because of her work, and also, she worked out the president's helpline, where presidents across this can, you know, coordinate whilst she did that. So, she made it so that the neighborhood advisory committee functioned very well, and she was only 49, so I was very unhappy, you know, to hear that she passed away, because I had expected that she would be coming back, back to work in January, but that's what everyone wants to know, I think she did a great job. And then, two, I, I take my walk, you know, on the Lake Philo pathway, and then I see some of the rest of the employees chopping down dead trees, and they're all very happy in their work, which makes me also very happy to see that these, these employees, you know, really enjoy their, enjoy their job out there. So, those, and also, I'm happy to be here, those are my only comments, so it's Eve's turn to speak now.
I'm happy to be here, very happy with the results of the vote tonight, and hoping that we finish early, because my face really hurts.
Working on it. Richard?
No comments.
All right. Ellen?
Happy to be here, and also very sad about Arlene. Arlene had a personality that was bigger than life, and I will certainly miss that.
Here, here.
No comment.
Okay. Amanda?
I don't think I can get to your thing, what I need to say about Arlene, so just know that she was a great wife to me, so happy to be here and focus on...
Well said. Tim?
No comment.
Okay.
Couple of things. First, I just want to congratulate the board on a very deep and rich discussion about the Lake Ann redevelopment. I think very positive and constructive, professional, and I think that that's something that we need to celebrate. I'm obviously disappointed with the outcome, but as a board, we need to come together and go forward. I think that Reston needs the development at Lake Ann. I would suggest that we think going forward, how do we effectively engage all the interests at the outset, so we don't end up with the discord that, that we had here? We've got some very challenging development issues out in front of us, there are lots of assets this community needs, we need the whole community behind us, as opposed to half with us, half against us. Second point I want to make is Mary Conaway is being recognized by USTA on Saturday. I'm very, very pleased that I'll be attending, I want to congratulate Mary publicly for that. She has just been an absolute champion for tennis here in Reston. Thank you.
John?
I have nothing, thank you.
Okay.
It's an honor and privilege to be here, it was also an extreme honor and privilege to know Arlene. She was very active here, but also at CAI, where I had the opportunity to work with her, and she will be missed significantly. And then, happy Thanksgiving to all.
Kate?
It was, it was a very hard day last Friday, to walk the halls of Reston Association with Arlene gone, knowing that she was going to be coming back to us. As I indicated to some of you, we had just processed some paperwork, knowing that she was going to come back. So, it was a surprise, but we are so blessed to have had her as a part of our, of our community in a variety of different ways, and she will be sorely missed, and, and irreplaceable, irreplaceable. I'm going to swing on a different note now. I am pleased to announce that you're going to see more soon coming on our LEAP program. Kirsten has been working very closely with our partners at LEAP, this is for the energy efficiency home piece, and on Monday, I am going to be having an energy efficiency evaluation done of my home. We have a really neat campaign that's coming up with 100, I'm sorry, 1,964 homes that we want to try and achieve. Obviously, that's 1964, that is the year that Reston was founded, so we're trying to get as many homes as we can to go through the process, and it'll be interesting to see how I do on my, on my report card, and what we need to do with that, but you'll be hearing a lot more about that as it comes. We are also going to be looking very closely at something that Mike Sanyo talked about, and Larry, and Rivetta, and I have separately, and soon will be talking together, about how we can get in front of some of these issues ahead of time, and put some mechanisms in place, so that all of the issues that are important to Reston Association, especially with the environment, sustainability, are taken into consideration when we're looking at projects like this at an early stage. We have some projects on the docket that are coming up, that Rivetta's team and the DRB have already started dealing with, with other tree removal and redevelopment projects, that we really do need that perspective that we were able to benefit from over the past couple of weeks with our environmental advisory committee, and I think positive change was made to the plan that was presented with two you this evening because of their efforts. So, we'll be doing more of that and paying attention to that with a more focused fashion going forward.
Thank you. I'll just add to the comments regarding Arlene, and I, I can only state, I feel exactly the same way, and I hope that the staff, the board, and our partners out there will find a way to put together a permanent commemorative for her that I think is fitting her spirit. So, I hope we can take charge on that. I think that's an easy one, and I think a good one to do, and make her a great spiritual representative of what this community should be all about. I also, ditto, happy Thanksgiving to everybody on camera, or still watching, and for those in the, in the seats. Hope everybody has a safe week next week. And to the part about this, this evening's discussions, I'm very proud of what we were able to accomplish tonight, thank you, everybody. It is a beginning. As Andy and I had the opportunity last night, as we do on a monthly basis, we met with our counterparts at Reston Citizens Association and Arch, and we talked about Phase Two. And what you saw tonight is basically the kickoff of what Phase Two is going to be like. So, it's a, it's a wake-up call for us to make sure that we have our internal processes in order, but I think it also is a good, on a high note, if you look at the 10-year effort that Lake Ann went through to revitalize their village center, I think there are a lot of lessons learned, good and bad, that came out of that 10-year process for that village center, and I think those are things that we can share with the community, with our stakeholders, and ourselves going into Under's Woods, Tall Oaks, North Point, South Lakes. So, let's, let's take everything we've learned from this, and be prepared to be a significant contributor in the Phase Two activities as they start to kick off. This is our opportunity to do it well. And on that note, I just thank again, everybody for taking the time and effort. We had two very big items to deal with tonight, and I appreciate your patience, and if we do this accordingly, we may not even have to worry about getting out of here on an extended time.
Great.
So, with that, if I may?
Item H.
Item H, thank you, sir. Let me, I'll read it in a second, I have to unlock my screen. I'm all digital, as you know. I move to here, I'm sorry, I am on IMG.
That, that's...
I'm sorry, I'm on...
Goodbye, please.
Oh, yeah, we moved something, right, yeah. I am reading the item for appeal request, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Move to hear the appeal of the Covenants Committee decision concerning the property located at 2177 Greenskeeper Court during the next regular meeting of the Board of Directors scheduled for Thursday, December 12, 2013. Do I hear a second?
Eve, second.
Any comments or questions?
Do you want to give an update, or thank you, Rivetta?
Yes.
She stayed late for a reason.
I didn't see her back there, I apologize for that.
I was waiting.
Thank you for being here. Yes, if you could give us an update on what we're...
First of all, I want to thank you all for your comments about Arlene. Certainly, our staff feels the loss, but we know she'd want us to continue the good work that she started, so we're regrouping and getting it together. As far as 2177 Greenskeepers Court, on October 16, the Covenants Committee found the property, which is in Lynx Pond Cluster, to be in violation of the use and maintenance covenants, and gave the owner until November 15 to abate the vegetation and reference and debris violations, and until November 30 to abate the maintenance violations. According to the appeal statement from the owner, the basis of the appeal primarily is not the violations themselves, but it appears that the owner takes issue with the Covenants Committee's process. The owner claims he did not receive the Covenants Committee decision, however, the letter was sent on October 23, and the file contains the actual green card, which he signed on October 26. The original letter stating the inspection findings was sent to him in May of 2013, and the advisory... letter stating the inspection findings was sent to him in May of 2013, and the advisor spoke with him in June and sent him photographs of the violations. He mentions a POA report. We do have that on file. It was issued in May of 2006, and it does cite the spall brick as being a violation. The owner claims also that he was not afforded enough time to address the Covenants Committee about the violations. Typically, the owners are allowed five minutes to address the Covenants Committee, which is usually a sufficient amount of time. Mr. Vassarstein was permitted to continue beyond the allotted time for a total of 15 to 20 minutes. Since his comments were becoming repetitive and unproductive, he was not allowed to continue longer, and now he claims he was denied his due process. The same is true of his discussions with the staff, who could only refer him to the Covenants Committee when his discussions reached a point of being unproductive and to the point of being harassing. We have tonight the Chair of the Covenants Committee, Victor Van Reeves, and Covenants Committee members Carol Wills and Eileen Dubose with us. They can give you the firsthand accounts of the meeting and the inspection that took place on October 14, if you wish, and they can respond to the comments that are made against the Covenants Committee and the Chair himself.
Before they speak, just as a, it is Green Keeper, no S?
That might have been my oversight, but...
No, you read it. You read it.
Okay.
Green Keeper, not S.
Yeah.
Thank you.
No S in the middle or at the end? Not Green Keepers and not Green...
It's Green Keepers. It's...
Keepers on the A.
There's no S in the middle.
Not Greens.
It's a mistake that is continually made, so.
Got it. Revetta, can I just ask you a question? I heard also it said that he was continually interrupted as he was speaking.
I would have to let the Chair of the Committee...
Okay.
...address the actual meeting. Do you want them to...
Yes, please. Thank you for taking the time.
I'll second.
The gentleman was interrupted, and I was only interrupting him. And as I tell each of the people who appear, they're given five minutes. Ironically, told this gentleman that he had 15 minutes, and that if he wanted to continue on longer, he had to wait till the other people, other members, came. And then we would continue the discussion. My ear was that he was the last. So when I discovered that, I explained that, sorry, we can continue on. But as Revetta indicated, the comments, we went in great detail, every item that was found to be in violation. There got to be more. The discussion was whether he was informed properly about when the inspection was there, or when the inspection was going to happen, and then parse out some of the procedure errors. So it got to be very repetitive. But he was given ample time, more than anybody else at night.
Okay.
I said my ear was in thinking there was somebody after him, telling him that, "You have 15 minutes now. You can come after and continue the discussion." Found out there was nobody after. We continued the discussion.
Then I think he also said that he had asked when the inspectors came out that he would be informed, and...
That was an issue brought up, and my response to that was, "Did you talk to the inspectors?"
Okay, and I was going to say that he said the inspectors came and inspected. He was in the house, and no one told him to come out.
Might I please address?
Carol was there, so.
I'm Carol Wills. I routinely go with staff on the Monday inspections. I was there. We got out of the car. There are three of us. Julie Loy, Sarah, and I got out of the car, as typically we do. As we're approaching, we knew we needed to knock. Julie approached the door. She's the senior staff member with us. She approached the door, knocked. We began our inspection, as we always do. We get out of the car, we start, we go down the list. Routinely, we do between 25 and 40 every Monday for inspections. So it is a time issue for us. Julie went to the door, rang the bell, no answer. Julie rang the bell a second time, no answer. Julie then knocked, and he then answered the door. So in that period of time, we were looking at the front facade of the house, the dead branches in the tree above us. As we proceeded, he then joined us. We talked through the discussions as he was with us, repeatedly asked us questions with regard to, there was a refuse and debris issue, which was dead leaves. Our routine boilerplate letter states, "Refuse and debris, including but not limited to..." colon. After that follows a list of items that the inspectors had previously seen. The only item there were dead leaves. There weren't dead leaves in buckets or anything else. So items may include but are not limited to dead leaves. He was very adamant, wanted to know what else he was being cited for. When we kept telling him it was just the dead leaves, well, they're mulch, not mulched dead leaves, simply lying there. He became, he became harassing in his method of addressing Julie. She maintained her professionalism, but told him that she could not give him a decision there, that that had come to the Covenants Committee. She showed much more patience than he probably deserved. She said nothing out of line, except that he had to make his appeal at the Covenants Committee. She could not, nor could I, give him any declaration at that point.
So you knocked twice and you rang the bell twice?
Ranged the bell twice, knocked once. He came to the door. We were on the front stoop. We had not gone around the back of the house or anything else. We were in the front of his property.
Does anyone have any questions that we can answer?
Because to wrap it up, I'm Eileen Dubose. I'm the Vice Chair of the Covenants Committee. And the two things that I'd like to point out, because due process is the issue here, is that he didn't seem to understand or to get that he had been receiving, you know, the certified letter. He had the regular letter. He had everything that everybody gets. He had the visit to the house. He had the phone call. He was there. He knew they were coming. And he had to let them in and talk to them when they came. And he was also sent a letter that invited him to come to the hearing tonight and finish his due process. And I don't see him here unless he's there and just came in. So I'm really kind of surprised at that, actually. But the process for him in due process was no different from any of the other people that we meet with. And, oh, I know, the one other thing I wanted to say is that on the board, we have photos of the, what we call violations. The leaves were piled. The tree branch was there for at least five years. The other things that he was being asked to pick up, that he said he didn't know what we were talking about, were pointed out to him on the screen. So I really don't know how much more we could have done. And thanks a lot.
Thank you. Well.
Ken?
Yes?
If I can. I think that staff in the committee exercised extreme restraint with this member. Remember, I think the word, somebody used the word agitated, which was probably a minimal description. He was rude and abusive to the staff. And I think that, quite frankly, this appeal has no merit whatsoever.
I'm beginning to feel the same way, but I'll let anybody else have any thoughts on this, because we have to take a vote. Tim?
What is the basis of the appeal at this point? What factual issue is he feeling? Or what conclusion?
In essence, that he wasn't given due process.
But we know he got the card. We know, I mean...
I'm not saying every claim is legitimate. I'm just saying...
Well, no, but I mean, is there any...
I'm innocent. I'm innocent.
That's why I said, there's no basis.
Right.
All right. But I mean, if he made the best possible case, there's nothing. Okay.
Due process.
Probably the smartest stall.
Well, then I'll ask the question, if I may. All those in favor of the motion to hear the appeal, please signify by stating aye. All those opposed, please signify by stating no.
No.
Anybody abstaining? All right.
So all nine said nay.
We said no.
Well, that's, excellent point. Thank you for the clarification.
Get that leg, Joe.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, folks. Thank you for taking the time.
See you next week.
You know why you want us to come here, I think, is because we want to make sure we don't want your talk.
Well, thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item...
That was absolutely...
I?
I'm Ben.
This is an entrance sign.
Yes, this is an entrance sign.
Mr. Butler?
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
What you have before you is a request, kind of a mutual request between staff and the members of the Longwood Grove community, to, for lack of a better term, codify something that's been in place on our property for a better part of 25 years. Director Sanio is very familiar with this sign. He drives by it all the time, I think. It was installed by the developer on property that then became our common area, and it's been in place for, again, approximately 25 years. And we have gotten a request to repair the sign by, you know, an individual who was representing at least a few others in that community. They want to spruce it up and so forth. And what we'd like to do is take this opportunity to sort of bring that forward and make it right or correct, and enter into a maintenance covenant agreement, which is council's suggestion is the proper vehicle. The difference here between some of these other ones that, and others you made here tonight as well, this area does not have a cluster. And it's, we're not dealing with one individual. I don't know if any of Mike's neighbors would say, "I will be solely responsible for this sign for the 50 homes in the neighborhood." So what we're recommending is that at least 10 signatories be on this maintenance covenant agreement, so that the responsibility is enforced upon one specific individual, and that in the future, we have more than one owner to approach should the thing, you know, become in a deteriorated condition. And we believe, because it's on our property, that it should be repaired before the neighbors might want to repair it themselves. So that's what you have before you. Mike maybe can give you a little bit more history on that. We've been dealing, again, with one individual up there who has indicated that she's speaking on behalf of a number of her neighbors who want it repaired.
I just want to give credit to Carrie Sawicki, who's been championing this. I sent her a note yesterday, mentioned that this was going to be on the agenda. Was there anything I ought to share with the board? She just said that she was just pleased that staff has moved this forward so quickly, and she's just excited about a positive vote.
Perhaps we should approach the Fairfax County Park Authority for a proffer to take care of this.
It's getting late.
Same.
I know.
What do we need to move? Or is there a motion yet?
Yeah.
Before we do that, Ken, could I just ask Lowry a question?
Please.
Yes, please.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. My hearing's gone. It's getting late. But anyway, budget impact, you said it's very small. How many billable hours are we talking about?
Well, we have draft maintenance covenant agreements already, and so we would just modify one for this particular situation. So...
Are you talking, I mean...
I mean, your billable hours.
Right. The reality is that the responsibility for maintenance and the expense of same, we put on the owner with regard to the sign.
Okay.
Because right now, there's nothing that indicates who's responsible. It was left there by the developer. It's on our property. We should not have the responsibility to maintain, repair, and replace. Is that where you were going with that?
No, I was just looking at this budget impact. He was saying only direct budgetary impact, dah 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 dah. Council's drafting a review time. Yeah.
That was just going to cost...
Ten, fifteen hours, I think.
How many, I want to know the billable hours, counselor.
Fifteen hours, an hour, an hour or under at most.
Hour, okay.
To make sure that we have the right people. Well, if we have 10, it may take a little bit longer. So give me two hours.
Oh, two hours.
Because we're going to have to verify the addresses and...
Is that minimum wage or what?
Well, I can...
Good.
Stop it.
It's our interest to keep it to an absolute minimum.
Okay, good.
Ellen, we're setting some precedent. I like this.
And why wouldn't we just want to remove?
She's not being invited to...
I just got uninvited, right? That's okay. I have a couple other parties. Don't worry about that.
Anybody else? I think Director Chu had a question.
Why would we want to just remove the sign?
Because I believe there's a strong interest with the neighborhood to have an identifier, so that when people drive north on Wheelie, they know where to turn.
Okay.
In addition to the roadside.
Maintenance covenant agreement is simply a revocable license agreement between us and them that can be terminated at any time, should the board decide.
And in that license agreement, do we clarify that replacement means replacement with DRB approval?
Right.
Yes.
And that painting it purple is...
Not acceptable.
Not acceptable.
The lime green works.
Lime green is good.
Unless, of course, the...
No comment.
So the cost to the community, I think it's about 1,500 bucks, is what they're talking about to repair it, replace it.
They're passing the hack?
Priming?
They're passing the hack?
They're passing the hack. That's right.
So...
Excluding the legal fees, of course. RA's going to bear that. Doesn't need to.
Okay.
Why don't you go voice that on in as well?
Good.
Okay.
And the recording fee.
Let's go with the motion.
Well, the recording fees, they do pay.
I was going to read the motion.
Thank you.
All right. And pardon my mouth with candy. Move to grant the request from owners of certain lots in the Longwood Grove neighborhood of Reston, Virginia, 20194, to enter into a maintenance covenant agreement with the Reston Association, by which they will bear the responsibilities and expenses related to the maintenance, repair, and replacement of the existing neighborhood entrance sign to their community located on Reston Association Common Area Property, Section 71, Block 1, Parcel B, and conditioned upon the execution of such maintenance covenant agreement as reviewed and approved by Reston Association's legal counsel, and further signed by at least 10 owners of properties in Section 71 Reston.
I'll second that.
Mike seconded.
All those in favor of the motion, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Is anybody opposed? Is anybody abstaining?
So it's all nine say yes.
I think we hit that one. And we have a dock maintenance item?
Yes. The next one is also a maintenance covenant agreement. These are two new docks that are going through DRB approval. And because the docks extend out onto the common area, that is the lake parcel, constitutes Lake Anne in one case, Lake Newport in the other, we, as I've mentioned to you before, we're trying to, over time, get all of these under agreement, similar maintenance covenant agreements, so that there's very distinct direction to the owners, that this is theirs, it's not ours, they're responsible for it, the liability, and so forth. And so we have two for your consideration. Questions?
Just so that you know, one of the reasons that we do the, it's a recorded maintenance covenant agreement, and so that the responsibility and expenses passed with purchase by a new purchaser.
Right.
So that those obligations are there, and there's no question, so that a new owner can't come in and say, "Oh, it's not mine. I didn't know anything about it."
And these are, these are new docks?
Correct.
Yet to be...
One is a, one is a replacement with, you know, a little bit larger and so forth.
Okay, so subject to DRB approval.
Right. Yes. Every, every maintenance covenant agreement that we've written has the specific DRB requirement in there. That is first and foremost.
I'll read the motion. Move to grant the request of the owners of 11418 Orchard Lane, Reston, Virginia, 20190, and 1464 Waterfront Road, Reston, Virginia, 20194, to enter into recordable dock maintenance covenant agreements with Reston Association to construct... to construct and maintain private docks located on Reston Association Common Area property, Section 1, Parcel 10, Lake Ann, and Section 33, Block 9, Lake Newport, respectively, subject to the execution of such agreement as reviewed and approved by Reston Association's legal counsel, and if approved, recorded after execution by the parties. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Who seconded?
I did.
Eve seconded.
I'll ask a question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by stating aye.
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 Aye. Is anybody opposed? Is anybody abstaining?
No.
Excellent.
So the dock is going to remain bright red, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Dock is bright red.
Board meeting calendar. Move to approve the 2014 board meeting calendar. Do I hear a second?
Second. I'll bet it's a second.
All right. Questions, sir?
Do we have enough meetings?
I was waiting for that.
Suggestion, can we have these put onto eRoom, Outlook, or whatever, just so that they're automatically put up on our calendar, rather than...
Absolutely.
Perhaps maybe some of the other committees, too. That would help. Bright pink or something like that.
You know, when you get that new CRM thing in there, you might be able to...
And SharePoint.
Maybe let's not wait for the CRM.
Okay. We will get those out to you. I've got to load them on my calendar, anyway, so I'll make sure that you get those.
That's real helpful.
Let's also say July 14th is by Steel Day.
Yes, it is.
We will have some wine and cheese that day.
We've done that before.
Yes, we have.
Boy, we are cheap dates, aren't we? Ooh, wine and cheese.
Yes. All right, I'll ask the question. Oh, I lost my... All those in favor of the motion, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Awesome. I lost my place. Hang on, sorry.
One nay.
I'm sorry. Anybody opposed? Is anybody abstaining? I heard that.
I heard that.
I heard that. All right. All right, we got the calendar done. Committee member appointments. Move to approve the appointment of Sigrid Jackman as a member of the seniors advisory committee for a term of three years, ending November 2016. Do you want me to read all of these at the same time, or go one by one?
That would be great.
One motion.
Yeah.
Okay. Appointment of Marisa Yoneyama as a member of the Communications Advisory Committee for a term of three years, ending November 2016. Appointment of Karen Anton as a member of the Elections Committee for a term of three years, ending in November 2016. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mike seconded.
All six of us.
Any questions or comments?
Glad to see Sigrid. She's awesome.
Good to see Mrs. Anton in there, too. All right. Then I'll ask a question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining?
I'm abstaining. Richard abstains?
Yes. All right, thank you. I think we are at the treasurer's report?
I'll save you the time. I don't have anything to present to you tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well said.
You're the best new board director.
I tell you.
We're keeping you.
Good hire. Ever, ever.
All the funds have moved overseas.
We have to move to...
Some sconings of Pakistan.
All right.
We're going to move on to the CEO report.
What about the... We did that?
All right. I'm going to pick out one thing in particular. In the report that I wanted to highlight from last week, I don't remember off the top of my head how many years we've been doing this, but Alice and Amy put together a fantastic benefits fair for the association's employees every year. One of the things that was started last year is that the Kaiser Permanente brings their healthcare van to onsite. And we had not only RA employees who were part of Kaiser Permanente go in for a health checkup, get flu shots, get blood work done, but we also had several of our non-Kaiser-based employees go through that process, including some seasonal employees, get a health check. And that's significant, because one of the reasons why our healthcare costs are so low with Kaiser is because we show what we're, you know, there's the commitment there. So I commend Alice for, and Amy for doing such a great job with that. It was a fantastic fair. And we have all of our benefits providers there to give information to our staff. So it's a really good, it's almost a full-day event that is put on, that's done. And one of our finance staff members won a Healthiest Lunch as well, putting together a fantastic pumpkin soup. So it was Rita Gomer in our payroll risk management division did that, so that was really great. As many of you learned this evening or know, we also, our chief financial officer will be in the process of filling that position in the next couple of months. I'll be working closely with Alice on that, with the goal of getting somebody in place no later than January. We've had quite a few different fall activities with regard to volunteer activity, with regard to volunteer assistance on things. The month of October, we had all kinds of activities going on with Lake Autobahn, with contractors helping to repair things. We had watershed cleanup, fall stream monitoring. I think what's most interesting, too, is we had 383 seventh graders from Langston Hughes who participated in organizing a meaningful watershed experience field trip that was organized by our staff. So we do quite a bit out in the community with environmental sustainability and teaching how to take care of things. So we work very hard on that. And at that, I'm just going to be quiet after that.
Okay.
I'm done for the moment.
Excellent. I'm noticing the POA statistics are trending in an interesting direction.
They are.
That's an interesting sign. Calls handled is trending in an interesting...
Yes.
And revenues for conference facilities, of all things, is trending in the right direction.
Yes. Yes, it is.
But I think that you're overlooking the major point.
What is that, sir?
And that is the graphical representation of this information that is appearing on this report.
I wasn't going to say that out loud, but it is impressive that, notice everything I'm making comments on are from the visuals. Isn't that interesting?
And I think that we need to do more of this.
Well done.
Tom, that's a reference to you, if you're still listening.
Shout out.
Shout out to Tom. All right, we're going to get out of here. We're going to finish here. I think that is it. I don't have anything for...
Someone needs to make a motion to adjourn then.
I move to adjourn.
Let's move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining?
Anyone want to abstain?
Thank you, everybody.
Sorry, Ken. We're 10 minutes late.